Your cell phones and. Pastor Moses Vasquez from First Christian Church of Allison. He is the board chair for the Exodus Project Ministries in Nuones County. Thank you for being here this morning.
Amen. Will you pray with me? Just by your heads. Father, King of Heaven, we are just thankful for the simple things, for a sound mind and stability to be here, Father. We're thankful for the protection you provide every day in our homes, on the road, as we travel, the things we take for granted. Lord, we're asking for your help today. We're asking for your wisdom. We're asking for your knowledge. We're asking for your unity, Lord, to help and bless our leaders and our community, Father. We pray for our country. We pray for just every individual, Father, that is lost and shut in. And God, today we ask that you reign in this courtroom, Father. You're the ultimate judge. We ask that you, whatever we do here, Father, be favorable to you. Lord, we thank you for all your blessings and how you provide and protect. God, lastly, we pray for the families, Lord, of these public servants, God, that they spend so many hours in here, Father. Everybody who's in here is doing something to serve someone else, Father. And so I ask humbly, Lord, that you be with them, be with their families, provide for them. Let them never feel alone or discouraged. This is our prayer today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is nine oh seven. I am calling this meeting to order. We have all commissioners. We have a quorum present. We are at nine oh one Leopard in the Nuones County Courthouse. I'm certifying that a quorum is present. Moving on to item D. Do we have any announcements of disclosures of conflict of interest? Any other commissioners? You may do so during the meeting if an item comes up and you're not thinking about it. So there being none. We will move on to item E. We have a public hearing. The Nuones County Commissioners Court will conduct a public hearing to receive public input relating to the changing the name Bernice Drive to Bernice Lane in Nuones County pursuant to section two five one dot zero one three of the Texas Transportation Code. Do we have anyone signed up for that once right outside for the public hearing? Did we have anyone sign up who wished to speak on that? Where's this? Oh, sorry. Thank you. These don't say. Is there anyone here who is here at present wishing to speak on the public hearing on the Bernice derived change name to Bernice Lane? Then if there is not, it is nine oh nine, and I will close that public hearing, and we will move on to our regular hearing. It is still nine oh nine, so moving forward. We have item F one, adopt a resolution proclaiming the Special Hearts Day December the eighth. And if I could get a motion for that, we have a motion. I'll second that motion, and Frances is going to read.
In recognition of Special Hearts Day, December eighth, two thousand twenty-three, whereas Special Hearts in the Arts provides individuals with special needs the opportunity to explore art, music, dance, and theater, which gives our community the gift of experiencing the unique and special abilities each talented special heart expresses with joy. And whereas Special Hearts Day allows special hearts in the arts, a community platform, to share their gift to the world through their own unique abilities. They rejoice in not just one special ability, but all special abilities, whether it be in sports, fine arts, or other unique gifts that each special heart proudly and unselfishly offers. Special Hearts Day allows everyone to embrace a reality that focuses on special abilities instead of disabilities. And whereas Special Hearts Day is a celebration of special hearts, families, volunteers, and community members that provide our county the opportunity to understand that special hearts are remarkable contributors to the greatness of our community. Special Hearts Day celebrates the blessing and gift of each special heart in our wonderful community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Commissioners Court of Nuones County does hereby formally designate December eighth, two thousand twenty-three as Special Hearts Day, duly adopted by a vote of the Commissioners Court of Nuones County, Texas, on this twenty-ninth day of November.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And I believe we have some folks out here that wish to speak on this, so please. I didn't get your names, so just thank you for being here.
I'm Sherri Davis.
Markiplier.
Aliborin.
Cristo Salinas. And T.
Yes, King Michael. He goes by King Michael, and he does wear the crown proudly.
Very good.
I'm the executive director for Special Hearts in the Arts, and we always say special hearts instead of special needs. I found out the only need they have is where's the bathroom and what's for snacks? And we say special abilities, not disabilities. I hate to break the news to everybody, but we all have a disability. So we, in our building, say we are special hearts, and we have.
Special abilities.
And I say they can stay when we say that. We appreciate the county because you used to help start Special Hearts Day proclamations. The city took over and too and does a proclamation, but we got blessed. Governor Abbott just signed a proclamation declaring Special Hearts Day a state holiday on December eighth. Now, as you look at me, you see that I'm a little older than a lot of you, so I am handing it to you to make it a United States Day and a World Day, where all special hearts in the world are recognized for their special abilities. And as the proclamation said, it's not just in the arts. It's sports. It's just them. So we so appreciate what you do for us, county, and thank you very much. I gave you a flyer for celebrations for next week to come and sign autographs and take pictures with our special hearts in the city. And then next Saturday, we're having the big celebration. Every one of you can come by and meet a lot of the special hearts. So God bless you. Thank you so much. This is a God-led organization.
Absolutely. Thank you. We have, we would like for y'all to come up front. Let's do a photo and.
By the way, we have a lot of special hearts. That sickness is water or not. Usually we have about twenty kids showing up.
Go over there.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for what you do, ma'am. Thank you.
Have a good day there, King. I like your crown.
By the way, we do perform all over the city, so if you need a performance, we're here for it.
Let them get out of here, and then I'm going to go to public comment, and I'm going to get the doctors out of here right after that. But since some of you signed up for public comment, I'm going to do it first, so, okay. The first person up is Ty Payne. If you will come to the podium, speak in the microphone and state your name and address, and understand that we cannot comment back, but you have your three minutes to speak. Yes?
I do have, for the clerk. I'm taller than the microphone right now.
Do you want someone to pass that out?
If they would, please. I do have the packets.
Reese, you want to?
And I have five extra if you all need them.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Some of y'all know me through professional means, and I look forward to seeing y'all again in that capacity in the future. Unfortunately today, I'm here with my wife as a private citizen, making a formal request to the Commissioners Court. Our home is at five seven seven eight County Road seventy-three Robstown, Texas. My name is Ty Payne. My wife's name is Rebecca Payne. It was purchased via VA loan on July twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two. Less than a year later, on June eighth, twenty-three, it caught fire due to shoddy electrical work from the previous owner. Local emergency services responded, but the home was a total loss. Since June of this year, our family has dealt with all of the issues you'll find on page three. As of now, we have, hold the deed to the property, and after paying an architect to design a new home and finding a builder, we still can't finalize the build because we're being stopped by the county. Over a month ago, the county engineering office, which the email is in the packet, told us the property was in a phenom floodway and as such was unbuildable without a no-ride certificate. That email is on page four. On pages five and six are the maps the county uses as argument. If you review it, there is zero changes to the property or the zoning for that area. I've requested a list of firms from the county to do the work and received no response. The information on this no-ride certificate that I've received from my builder is that it could take over a year and up to fifty thousand dollars in order to get received. He's also never heard of the certificate, nor has anyone living down there in that area. This type of delay in cost creates an undue hardship for our family. It doesn't matter if the cost is five hundred, five thousand, or fifty thousand. I can't do it. If you review pages nine to twelve, there's now pictures of new construction improvements that are in that area from the last six months, all of which fall under the same no encroachment clause within the actual ordinance. When doing the research, come here today, I reviewed Article Four, Section D of the same flood ordinance. The section is on page thirteen to fifteen. However, as of Monday, I reviewed it again and noticed Article Four, Section D, ten C. It states the written verification and the ordinance must be provided stating that building below the base flood elevation is authorized. But we're not, we're not trying to build below the flood elevation. The lowest point on the first floor of the home, which is actually in the packet, is estimated six feet above that elevation. No attempt was made by the county engineer's office to look at the plans or his staff. There should be no need for this no-ride certificate because we are not building below that elevation. Our builder should be able to proceed with a permit. So under Article Four, Section D two, I'm accusing and alleging error in requirement, decision, and termination by the county engineer, Juan Fementel, and his office due to incompetence and/or gross negligence of his duties, and formally requesting a decision from the County Commissioners Court. I was going to request a variance under section Delta six, however, based on, from Monday, that under Delta ten C, we're requesting we'd be allowed to continue the permitting process to procure the flood elevation certificate. I appreciate the time. I understand the rules governing the court do not allow for an immediate answer. However, our contact information, all forms is on the last page. We're available to speak to any of you. Again, we appreciate it. Thank you for the time. If you need us, I'm heading down to the county engineer's office. You might want to call them. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie Saldana.
Good morning. I come to you because you're going to be making appointments very soon.
State your address.
I'm sorry?
State your address, too, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Susie Luna Saldana, forty-seven, ten Hackle, Corpus Christi, seven, eight, four, one, five. Okay, thank you. I'm coming before you because you will soon be making port appointments and other appointments. And I went before the city also because I'm concerned in the way appointments are done. Appointments are done based on not qualifications of the people that I feel. Are they're made by political affiliations and by political appointments. I have a big concern about some of them. My biggest concern comes about your latest appointments that was done on December of two thousand twenty-two. Your application leaves something to be desired. On your application, you list who is your immediate family. And according to state law, which your county attorney should have been able to tell you, a sister or brother is considered an immediate family. You may strengthen a definition from the state, but you may not weaken it. That is wrong, so your appointment there in itself was wrong, appointing this particular commissioner at the time because there was a relationship there of a sister. I want you to take a look at that. There's one other thing that I would like you to take a look at. I have concerns about a particular commissioner actually not being a residence of Nuones County. And all your things deal with Nuones County. It's okay for you to do things wrong outside the county, and you can come be a port commissioner. Think about this. I am requested, and I know you can't answer, that you ask for information on the residency of maybe all the commissioners. Let them provide you with a residential place. Let them give you your passport to show where they are actually have a homestead home, not in Nuones County, but in a county not here. You have some things to look at, and your county attorney should be advising you on this. They should have advised you of this in this application that deals only with Nuones County. When you appoint a port commissioner or you appoint any, to any board, it should be based on the whole area, not just on Nuones County, because otherwise you can go out and commit murder in Travis County, and it's okay to come serve here in Corpus Christi, just to make a point. Please take that into consideration, especially when you have another board member position coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Preston Cook.
Good morning. Creston Cook, forty-seven, eighteen Mars Hill Drive. I'm executive director of the South Texas Military Task Force. First of all, thank you Commissioners and Commissioners Court for your service to our county and for your support to our area military installations. The mission of our task force is to promote, preserve, and protect area military installations. We want to increase the awareness of the military and economic value, value these facilities have in our community. The membership of our task force includes leaders in business, education, industry, military, government, and elected officials. We pride ourselves in being nonpartisan, a diverse group focused solely on supporting and promoting area military installations. We represent, in Texas, we have fifteen major military installations. Three of these fifteen installations are in our community. Naval Air Station Corpus Christi employs over five thousand local civilians. They provide initial training to new pilots in the Navy, U.S. Marine Corps, U.S. Coast Guard, and allied nations, and it has over fifty tenants, including U.S. Customs and Border Protection and the chief in naval air training. Corpus Christi Army Dupa was the largest helicopter repair facility in the world, public or private, and is the largest single employer in South Texas employing over three thousand civilians. Naval Air Station Kingsville trains our Navy strike fighters. So when our Navy aircraft carriers are deployed around the world, they are considered four and a half acres of sovereign U.S. territory, and half of the pilots that fly on these carriers are trained right here in South Texas. We also represent and support U.S. Coast Guard Sector Corpus Christi, which has many missions, including protecting the port of Corpus Christi and half of our Texas coastline. And lastly, we support the port of Corpus Christi, which is designated Strategic Port of Embarkation. Many military shipments are going in and out of our port of Corpus Christi, and that really helps our local economy. All these facilities are critical to our national defense and the economic value of our area. We, again, appreciate your continued support to the Military Task Force and our mission to support area military installations. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Kimberly Lee Son.
My name is Dr. Kimberly Lee Son, and I am an academic faculty member of the Christus Bond Texas A&amp;M Emergency Medicine Residency Program. I reside at forty-nine, twenty-six Greenbrier Drive. Dear Nuones County Commissioners, Judge Scott, friends and community, I stand before you today with immense gratitude on behalf of the Emergency Medicine Program in the Corpus Christi Coastal Bend. Our journey to preserve the residency program has been arduous, but your unwavering support has been the bedrock of our success. Thank you very much. Your commitment to ensuring quality medical care for our community has not gone unnoticed. In the face of challenges and hardships, your steadfast support has been the cornerstone of our success in preserving the Emergency Medicine Residency Program for the Corpus Christi community. We extend our heartfelt thanks for your dedication to the well-being of the people we love and serve. I would also like to express our sincere appreciation to the Nuones County Hospital District. Your diligence in not only listening to our story, but responding promptly, has been instrumental. Your partnership exemplifies the collaborative spirit needed to overcome the challenges we face in the Corpus Christi healthcare landscape. As we move forward, we are excited about the prospect of continuing to practice emergency medicine in our community. Your support ensures that we can provide high-quality care to the residents of the coastal bend for many years to come. Together, we are building a foundation for a healthier, stronger community, and we are grateful for the opportunity to contribute to that vision. On behalf of myself, my colleagues, our families, loved ones, and all the residents of the Corpus Christi Coastal Bend, thank you for your continued support and your commitment to the well-being of our community.
Thank you. Shanny Atalia.
Hello, Judge Scott and County Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Sunny Atalia, and I reside at twenty-ten Magnolia Falls Drive. You've heard a lot from us these last few weeks, and we're very grateful that you listened. Who knew that we'd all be experts in advocacy at the end of this, right? There's one thing from the day this all began, however, that I keep thinking about. It was when we were told that the closure of our program had been in the works for months. But by design, we hadn't been told until that specific day so that we couldn't fight it. That stuck with me ever since. At first, because it was a very clear message, right? A message that meant saving us was impossible, that no matter what anyone did or said, the decision was final. Our pride and our hope shattered with just one sentence. But my mind quickly got back to the real issue of an impossible battle, and I realized something. Was that we do the impossible every single day. Our ER is the place where impossible becomes possible. We literally bring people back from the dead. And when you take a group of fifty of us that do that for our day jobs, we're going to find a way to make it possible. But we had little experience doing that outside of our day jobs, and that's where you all stepped in, city council and CHD and all of you on the Commissioners Court. With your blissful guidance and unwavering support, we learned how to make this impossible, possible. And Judge Scott, with your persistence and perseverance, this was pivotal in the course of our outcome, so much so that now Spawn themselves are willing to help us make this possible. The last time we met, I said our first battle was saving quality emergency care in the coastal bend, and our next battle would be to ensure it. The first agreement put a deadline on us and the well-being of our community, and that's why we had to stand together instead. And you did, too. This new agreement today ensures that quality emergency care will not be lost in the future, that our well-being of the coastal bend will be secured, one way or another. That was our real battle, our final battle, and we're this close to winning it together. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Craig Peterson.
I'm just going to go ahead and take this out. My name is Craig Peterson. I'm one of the core faculty with the Emergency Medicine Residency Program. I live at one five six three zero Gypsy Street out on the island. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Judge Scott, members of the Commissioners Court, for the opportunity to speak to you today. About six weeks ago, when the announcement was made to close the program, I was devastated. Concerns about the future of the program, the residents and their training, our families and careers have been all-consuming. Most of our free time, while not on shift in the ER, has been devoted to our efforts to preserve the program. After attending city council meetings, Commissioners Courts, NCHD meetings, however, I've realized that while the proposed residency closure was the largest, most immediate threat in my world, it was far from the only issue of concern to our community. It's just one of the many issues that you must consider when deciding how best to serve the people of Nuones County. With that new perspective in mind, I cannot emphasize enough how grateful I am and how grateful we all are for the careful time and attention you've paid to our cause of preserving the program. You've truly gone above and beyond convening special committees and special sessions to work with us and on our behalf. I want to express sincere thanks to Judge Scott, the Commissioners Court, the special committee members drawn from our community, the NCHD Board, as well as Spawn leadership for the collective efforts that went into this revised set of terms. This agreement will ensure full recruiting classes for the next six years, stability and support for the logistical and administrative requirements necessary for a functional program, and most importantly, will secure faith in the training institution and peace of mind for both faculty and resident physicians. This will allow us to focus on providing excellent emergency care to those in our community and specifically the most vulnerable in our community, those supported by Nuones County Hospital District, those that, those that fall into that indigent category that are most dependent on our services. Further, the Nuones County Hospital District and county commissioners will have the ability to protect and preserve the residency for the future. It will ensure that the residency program will remain within the Corpus Christi community without sole reliance on any one institution. I believe that with these stipulations in place, our program, prospective residents in the community can be assured of the stability and continued success of this program for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Ariola.
Judge Scott, members of the commission, thank you for your time this morning. Al Ariola, three oh one Luis Drive is my personal residence. I am here representing the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce as their president and CEO. On behalf of our board of directors and a hun, a thousand-plus members, we are here to thank you for your investment and support into our wind, excuse me, windstorm insurance reform efforts. Let's see here. Your commitment to this crucial cause demonstrates your dedication to our community's well-being and resilience. Your support of the United Chamber's efforts in advocating for windstorm insurance reforms, a significant and profound understanding of the challenges our region faces, and showcases your proactive approach to securing a better future for our residents. Your collaboration, dedication, and investment do not go unnoticed. We are immensely grateful for your leadership and support in this critical initiative. Together, we are striving for a more secure and resilient future for the region. Something to highlight from this year, something we were proud of for mobilizing, was if you guys recall, mid-year, TWIA was considering a rate hike, and we did mobilize our membership, did mobilize grassroots effort to try to lobby the board, the TWIA board, to not make that decision. And I hope, I would say that as a part of those efforts, we were help, able to succeed in that goal of making sure that windstorm insurance rates did not go up in the coastal bend. So again, I want to thank you for your investment and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who didn't have the opportunity to sign up in public comment who wishes to speak? If you will just state your name and address and come on up. Yes, sorry.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Calvo. Thank you, Commissioners and Judge, for hearing me out. I am Sandra Calvo. We work, I work for CM Company Auctions. I do online auctions. We specialize in liquidating an inventory of auctions, equipment. We appraise inventory. We do impound seizures for vehicles. We are, our responsibility is we catalog all equipment. We videotape the equipment. We, we do all the descriptions. We upload them to our site. We handle all the logistics for the, for the customers, for the consignors. We take care of all the, all the questions, all the emails, all the calls. We do it all for the, for the consignors. We work both parts, the customers also, so we take care of them also. And we've been, we have been over twenty years with this company. We, the company's been over twenty years that we've been doing the auctions. And if given the opportunity, we, we work over, we'll give you one hundred percent of your time, of our time. Thank you very much for hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, that is the end of our public comment. I want to move into the regular agenda on three A one because the doctors are here to get them out so they can go back to work. We appreciate. We appreciate you being here, but we understand you have very busy, important jobs you need to get back to. People might be waiting for you. 3A1 is receive an update from the hospital district relating to the Emergency Medical Residency Program by Christa Spahn Health System, and Johnny Hip is here to give us that presentation.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Teresa's passing out to you the version of the term sheet that we discussed yesterday morning with the Judges Committee. I noticed that the copy that was included in your board packet was the original one that we had from a couple of weeks ago.
Is that the current one?
Yes. So, this one has a date in the top-left corner of 11/27, and that one differs from the original one that was distributed on 11/13. So, Commissioners, just to summarize, this term sheet reflects the terms that the hospital district has reached with SPON as of yesterday. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. We're going through some additional tweaks that happened overnight. They need to address some federal regulations that govern physician pay and some other things that need to be included in there. Also going to be making a change in how often the hospital district pays. It's in there at 1/12, and we'll be probably paying quarterly and stuff and how that works. So, just to summarize, this agreement is the framework for, or these bullet points are for, the framework of an agreement that will follow. It'll be a formal agreement that have more of the lawyering things that need to be included in it and that kind of thing. So, the terms of this term sheet are pretty basic. The hospital district's going to step up with funding over a six-year period. The six-year was added after we had worked on it a little bit longer. And the hospital district will, in the first two or three years, provide stepped-up funding to address the way the program was going to unwind and how we'll step in and fund that. It also includes some safeguards for the faculty and physicians, that they'll be getting market pay while they're there, that the hospital SPON will maintain their support that they need in terms of administrative support that it takes to run the program and supplies and things that they need to keep it going. So, without going into a lot of other details, what I would tell you is that this six-year agreement buys time. It's not a permanent solution, and so this six years will allow us to work through, hopefully faster than that, a more permanent solution for the program. It's really a question of two things. It's, one, having long-term funding set aside for it, and, two, making sure that we have a facility in Corpus, a teaching facility, a hospital, that will accommodate the program. So, once again, this agreement buys us six years. I would characterize it as time that, it does buy us time in that we will have an opportunity to work on things that are much more improved as we go through time, and the intent is to try to work through those exponentially as we can. The hospital district board will meet on this Friday at 12:15 to consider this version. If y'all want to attend, you're welcome to attend, make comments and stuff to the board. They've been apprised of this agreement and the structure and stuff of it. I'll need to go through it in a little more detail to answer a couple of questions that have come up along the way since yesterday that I need to make sure get addressed. So, in summary, that's where we are today.
Thank you.
Do you think any of those minor changes are anything significant that would cause any concern for us or for the doctors impacted by this?
No, Commissioner, I don't, because there wasn't provision we added in the last agreement that made sure that the physicians were going to get market-based pay. So, whenever a hospital pays physicians, a bunch of federal regulations kick in. And so, those regulations needed to be stated in there, and essentially, in the part where it said "market-based pay," it would be something to the effect as determined by Stark Law. It's a federal law that governs, like I said, payments back and forth between physicians and hospitals. The other ones were, one, where the hospital district's going to make payments quarterly instead of every month. And then there was another provision that dealt with how the agreement could terminate. And basically, we put a safeguard in there that says that SPON can't terminate the agreement without the consent of the hospital district. And so, that's built in there to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we had now, where the thing came to an end, there was no, it's one of the earlier physicians mentioned, no time to react and stuff. And so, I think if we do come to a situation where SPON desires to terminate the agreement, then what our duty is, is to make sure that there's another place in the community where the program is accommodated, and then we could consider agreeing to it then. But we put a safeguard in there that they couldn't unilaterally terminate it without our consent, and that was to make sure that we had enough notice that it was going to happen and that we could make sure that there were plans that the program was accommodated in the community.
So, this provides for stability that the doctors and all of us in the community have been asking for. There's safeguards in place that will ensure, at least, like you said, at least perhaps up to the six years or sooner, if there were some sort of systemic change that needed to be made, but everyone would be basically involved, included, and so there's some safeguards to protect against that.
Yes, Commissioner, and again, just to add to some of the comments I think you all made yesterday, it stems the possibility that we're going to have an exodus of 52 or 60-something jobs in the community that'll leave. The Emergency Medicine Program is a critical piece to the hospital district's indigent care program, because a lot of our indigents, even though we have multiple clinics available to them, still seek care in the emergency room. And again, this makes sure, and because typically, those patients are, like all patients that come to a hospital, they may or may not be subject to teaching physicians, but the teaching program, in terms of family practice, is sort of the backbone of our indigent care program. But when it comes to the emergency room, it becomes the Emergency Medicine Residence.
I have a couple of just quick, nothing questions. My first question is, did SPON not already pay market-based pay to their physicians?
Judge, I don't know that. I don't know. We've never, I've never been required to investigate that, but it was a reasonable request, yes.
And number two, just to clarify for maybe someone listening, will this considerable financial commitment by the hospital district won't hinder you or take away from anything that you're already doing for our community and the indigent care and everything that you do on a day-to-day basis?
Judge, we have, the hospital district, as y'all know, has large reserves, and we keep them there to make sure that the indigent are taking care of the community. But I will tell you that when I come to you next year, when we talk about the budget, I don't want y'all to get amnesia about what happened. So, and not that y'all do, but I just want to remind y'all that my board's going to expect me to have that conversation with you all when we talk about our budget. The hospital district's payments under this agreement will start flowing in July of next year. It refers to academic years in there, and the academic year is July 1 through June 30.
Correct.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, and we're going to embed that date in there in the agreement too. But that, anyway, they're going to talk to me on Friday about the terms of the agreement, but then the next question that comes is, well, Johnny, how are we going to pay for it? And so, anyway, we're going to pay for it out of our reserves, but they want us to have a conversation about that going forward.
I just felt like the public needed to hear that, that it is a considerable commitment that you're making to our community, and we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, Judge, and I didn't highlight that, but the total value of the six years, it's $21,250,000.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't want to say, Judge.
Yes, go ahead.
Now, really, life support the residency program, ER, medical emergencies and all that, I'm still very concerned about the $21 million. I'm very concerned, the fact that we're taken away from indigent care right now if we need it, you know, and some of those indigent care don't have money even to pay specialists. You know, I always wanted to see what was the second residency that SPON would come to the table with, you know, and we never knew what it was, right, because we took a different direction. I just don't think that the hospital district should be spending $21 million from the reserve to pay for salaries. It's already there. So, depends on salaries, when all along, somebody's been saying, and I think the county attorney can back this up, you know, we're not in the business of medical, and we're not in the business of paying people to provide medical. You know, we're not in the business, but, you know, I've heard this for about almost six months already, you know, and yet, we're here, we're paying $21 million so somebody else can provide medical. So, I don't know what the difference would be between a nonprofit agency paying, doing medical, and us paying them to do medical, than us paying the doctors to do medical. So, I'm confused here. What are really the rights that we're doing here? I mean, what are the legal issues here that we have? The residency program is good. I don't know how much SPON is coming on the table with. You know, Johnny, do you know how much they're coming to the table with?
Well, Commissioner, let me, can I back up and answer your other questions, and I'll get to that one? So, there is a provision in the agreement that says if SPON gets funding otherwise, in other words, funding from other than us, that they have to offset what we pay. There are programs, and probably the most easiest one I can cite is the Higher Education Coordinating Board provides money for both new residency programs and existing residency programs. So, there certainly is a part of our conversation with SPON that they would work to seek other funding so that we could have that offset from what the hospital district pays. So, the four-point, the full amount there, the values we pay in years three and the years that follow that are essentially a function of SPON's direct cost for funding the Emergency Medicine Program. And I say "direct" because the hospital incurs a direct and indirect cost. So, our basis for conversation with SPON dealt solely with reimbursing them for direct cost. I'll be candid with you, the 4.5 million, when we talked to them, is below what I expected. Our research indicated that for this kind of program, this size, et cetera, that direct cost for those institutions is around 5.3 million each year. And so, what is left with SPON to pay is the indirect cost, because they incur kinds of costs at providing classrooms, making sure that faculty gets paid. There are all kinds of other costs and stuff that they incur that are outside what we agreed to. So, what I'm seeing, Commissioner, is that in this deal, there's an offset. Before SPON gets any additional payments, they offset what we pay to them. There's also the cost that they talked about in terms of direct cost being less than what our experience is, and we validated those costs and stuff there. So, I think, Commissioner, and sort of in both cases, we're okay there. But, you know, this issue was one that was an important one to the Commissioners' Court. Y'all, I think, adopted a couple of resolutions along the way in support of the program, and so the hospital district's board commissioner reacted to those. And they directed me to work on trying to find a solution. You know, the first one got close, but it didn't get close enough, and so we went ahead and added a sixth year to the agreement, and SPON agreed. So, Commissioners, I mean, I guess there's a lot of different ways that you could look at this. And in this case, we responded to the court's indication that this was an important matter before the community, and so the board reacted to it. But at the same time, we tried to build safeguards into there to make sure that if there's any other funding that came along, that we didn't have to pay it, and the amount that we negotiated with them is far less than what other people have to pay for direct cost.
You know, and I just, I know you can make two points right now about coming back to the Commissioners' Court and, you know, and there's some of us here that want to, you always say no to no raising taxes. Somebody, you know, I don't care what it is, they're going to say no to no tax. And some, you're going to come back to us next year and say you're going to have to raise tax to replace some of those money that you're using right now. When we did the resolution, we didn't know about the $21 million. At least I didn't know about. So, you know, so I don't, this came, it just came after the resolution, you know. So, at least I didn't know about that there was a $21 million.
I think that was way before the discussions. No one knew about the $21 million at that time.
That's what I'm saying. But that's why with this resolution, I was in favor of the whole resolution, because we were wanting to keep the residency, wanting, you know, wanting to keep the ERs. But sometimes I wonder if it's cheaper to hire doctors versus doing the ER emergency residency. I don't know. You know, I don't think those are the things haven't been answered yet, you know, versus one versus the other. I'm just concerned, again, about the $21 million that we, that we're doing from the indigent care reserve funds in case something does happen, you know, and if we have that kind of money, then why don't we have, why don't we subsidize some of those indigent care people that can't afford specialists? Why don't we are paying for those? How come we're not paying to help them go to the hospital and get surgery that they don't have money to? The doctors ain't going to do it for free either. So, why don't we do that? I mean, now that we're doing, now that we're giving them so much money away, why don't we look at something else about helping the indigents?
Commissioner, there was some sense of immediacy when this was brought up. You know, there were, I think, a timeline of the residents needing to get a class filled. I mean, they may still be a little bit behind already in trying to make sure that their classes were filled. We didn't have any notice either. You know, this got dropped on us at the same time it got dropped on everybody. And so, we believe that this agreement is one that buys us time to take a look back and figure out if there's some other way to do this. And so, I think we, given the circumstances that we had in front of us, the thing that it needed to happen quickly, that we needed to respond, the faculty needed some responses, the residents who applied for the program needed some responses. And so, Commissioner, when you have that kind of circumstances in front of you, and then the issues I confronted in trying to convince SPON to back away from this, it took some dollars.
It always takes dollars, unfortunately, right?
Yes, sir.
But the other thing I have, Johnny, that Judge has mentioned it too, and I don't want to make sure that we're not paying people twice or getting supplemented twice from SPON and from the hospital district. You know, so how do we find out? How do we know then?
Well, that's probably one of the weaknesses of this arrangement, Commissioner, is that we have an arrangement with SPON for them to provide our indigent care, and so it could be, you know, said that we're paying for it twice. I mean, we're, in this case, the Emergency Medicine Program, in addition to care of the indigent, it also represented a situation in the community where people in the community brought up issues about not having the residents available, it affects industry. So, even though I characterize this as being one that made sure that our indigents were taken care of, having the Emergency Medicine Program also has other benefits. They're not all ours. So, there, we tried to factor Commissioners, all those things into our decision, but I would go back and just highlight again that we were working under a very short timeline. We had a situation that none of us had advance warning about, even in my regular meetings with SPON, it was never mentioned that they were contemplating doing this. So, I think, Commissioner, it took some money to get it done, and we may not realize the full six years of it. There may be something that comes along, but what we have done is bought a period of time where we can sit back and look at all the issues you just mentioned, that you enumerated, that need to be looked at. I can almost guarantee you that is, we look backwards, our hindsight's going to be 2020, but we didn't have the benefit of hindsight here. We had to move quickly. We needed to respond, and that's what we did.
And how soon can we do that now?
Well, Commissioner, we, you know, $20 million is, it's about somewhere between 17% and 20% of our cash reserves, and so it won't all go out in one year, but it will have, it will have an impact.
The last question I have, Johnny, again, I'm just, this is really, I mean, I've been thinking a lot about this. It just kind of bothers me a lot that, you know, we always find reason It just kind of, kind of bothers me a lot that, you know, we always find reason not to do things, you know, when it comes to indigent and helping the poor sometimes, you know, but yet we, man, we've joined the front lines to, you know, to pay salaries and everything else to, you know, for something that we, I don't think you should have ever gotten involved. This is not your fight really should have been. You know, your agreement with SPAN was two residencies. You didn't say which ones, you know, the, the family medicine was, it's a, it's a have-to-do thing, family medicine. That was, that was a do, have-to-do thing. But the other one was chosen by SPAN, I think, to do the emergency, a medical emergency, uh, ER and not, not the hospital district. Came from them and in order to get rid of it, they have to come up with another one. You know, and I, and I always wondered what would the other one would be? It would be specialty doctors? Would it be primary doctors? Something that, uh, that some of the people who stay here, that's going to, you know, get, get their own patient here, stay here? Because that's another concern that I have is, do y'all have a, uh, y'all, will y'all put a, um, some kind of a clause there where it says if you finish the residency, you have to stay here for two years in this county?
Well, um, Commissioner, I'll put that on the list. I, I can't answer that question right now, but I think if, um, there's an opportunity, we'll make sure that we work on something like that. Uh, I will say that in the list that I passed out to you, if you look at paragraph seven, paragraph seven talks about us and SPAN conducting a community needs assessment in terms of what physicians and stuff are needed in the community. So if it, if it becomes, uh, that the emergency medicine program doesn't stay with SPAN, it goes somewhere else, so there will be in a situation where, uh, there won't be a second residency there. So it's in our intent that that paragraph seven would be used to determine, help determine what a second residency program or even a third residency program would need to be at SPAN. I agree with you Commissioners, and I think everyone in the room is beginning to experience , uh, issues right now where it's hard to access physicians. Either they're retiring or they're leaving town or there's not enough of them. I mean, there's a series of issues that are out there, uh, confronting, uh, all of us as citizens of the community. And that's why paragraph seven is in there so that we essentially get, get to, get a list of priority, medical specialties that need to be added back to the community. So that as we have this six-year period, we can begin to formulate how that might work. Now, Commissioner, I will say that there also is, uh, some, some movement. There is, is sort of a very early meeting I have with, uh, I and some members of my board have with City Manager Zanoni, uh, tomorrow, uh, to talk about, uh, how we can use some available funds that the city has, uh, for helping retain physicians or draw physicians to the community. Um, the initial conversation piece tomorrow is just, it's a very early, very preliminary without a, a framework in place yet, but that conversation will involve, uh, possibly finding a way to help recruit physicians by, uh, helping them relieve some of their loan burden, either repay it for them or do whatever. But I, I, I envision that pursuit will be much broader than that, and I think it will go exactly to what you said a while ago about trying to work out something where if we have physicians who stay in the community, we work with them to somehow relieve their, uh, their loans and stuff that they have an obligation to stay here. And so Commissioner, just to close with, uh, you know, I, I, I worked in healthcare a long time, run several hospitals along the way, and there's two things that seem to work, uh, in keeping physicians in the communities. Either recruit people who are already from here or somewhere in this area. And then the other one I would venture to say is that when a physician comes to the community, they marry locally. It's just, you know, it's just, you know, they marry someone here and they, and whoever they marry wants to keep them here and keep them close to their family. And so there, there are two ways, two easy ways to work, but outside of that, there are some other mechanisms in play. And so that's why paragraph seven was, uh, put in there to, uh, help address and identify what needs in the community are. It'll also benefit SPAN because it'll help them identify what that second residency program needs to be if emergency medicine goes to another facility.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Judge, if I can jump in, um, and I'm sorry, maybe I, I could have gone, um, for Commissioner Gonzalez, it might have cleared up some of the things that, that he had questions about. First of all, uh, let me go back and, and I'm, I'm going to let Jenny, I want Jenny to be able to answer what Commissioner Gonzalez addressed in regards to why we're doing this because I think respectfully, he's confusing the, the county's role and the county hospital district's role. He made comments earlier about, "We shouldn't be doing medical. We as a county, why are we doing this?" Well, this is not us doing this. This is the hospital district and their role in life is to provide medical care for the indigent, correct?
Yes, they were, uh, created for that purpose. And once they're, once they were created, that's when the county got out of the business and is no longer able to spend tax dollars on medical because that is taken over by the hospital district.
So let me just respond to him, so he mentioned my name. I respond, Jenny, we met, is no difference than the hospital district giving us the money to run the clinic, the medical, right? Than giving the money to the hospital to provide medical.
Completely different.
The difference, what?
It's completely different, Commissioner Gonzalez.
It's not coming from us. It's coming from the hospital district.
But it's, it's completely different. Their role, you made comments earlier, and, and I'm addressing your comments because you specifically made them, and you also alluded to me, and I didn't jump in on you on the tax.
I didn't mention your name.
Yeah, but you, come on. Commissioner, you said the tax issue, you know, it was me, but I let you finish your entire thing, so I'm, I'm responding to your comments, which were, which were respectfully incorrect. There's a huge difference in, in getting funds for programs that are within the scope of what the county can do and not. These funds are being allocated for indigent care. When, you also made comments about, "We don't do enough for the poor." Oh, my God. How many millions of dollars does the hospital district do and take for indigent care? Johnny, I mean, do you know the answer to that? I mean, you're spending millions and millions of dollars subsidizing indigent care at SPAN now. Is that correct? I mean, there, we're, this county through the hospital district, that's their charge is to do exactly what you're doing and just, just to say that you're not doing that would be incorrect because that would be without your mission.
Commissioner, y'all, well, let me just draw you to the easiest number. Our tax levy, which y'all approve the tax rate for, is right around thirty million dollars a year. And the hospital district uses that money to, uh, make sure that the indigent are taken care of. Uh, we also, uh, use the money to help, uh, all three hospital systems in the community, uh, draw additional federal supplemental payment funds and stuff. And so if you want a number, thirty million's the number because that's what our tax rate is.
And that money goes towards the surgeries and the things that-
It goes to all of that.
That the Commissioner alluded to, that, that why, why aren't we doing more of that? And the answer is we're doing a ton of that. We're doing millions and millions of, of that now, so, but I want, but we're doing millions and millions of that now. We could always do more for anything. I, I agree with you on that. And, and I think it's important to note too, that, that the long play on this is, one, there was no second residency ever offered by SPAN when they wanted to eliminate this. In fact, if everyone will remember, their lawyers stood up and said, "They don't believe they have to have a second residency." Thus, the hospital district passed a resolution that also said, "Oh, yes, you do. We, we are not giving up on that provision and we're going to fight that provision because there is a provision in the agreement that clearly says SPAN has to provide two residencies." So at this point, I would look forward to hearing a presentation on that as well, but they did not have a plan for a second residency because they did not believe they needed to have a second residency. So that's part of it is, what the hope would be on the long play on this, being just completely candid with everybody on this, is nobody in the room thinks this is the greatest deal in the world. It buys time, as Johnny said. We've all had to make accommodations to get to a point where we can live with what we have, knowing that at the end of the day, there might be, and there might be a transition of this program elsewhere. Johnny did yeoman's work going back and really listening to what the doctor's input was, what the, what the hospital district board members were, what Commissioner's Court's input were. Anybody that he, he did a really good job of going back and working with SPAN, and SPAN came to the table, right, with Johnny. Didn't come to our meetings and that's, that's okay, that's their choice, but they, they came to the table with Johnny and in good faith, came up with something that they could live with, including putting a clause in here that indicates that if there is a transition, the hospital district will be involved, which means they won't come in and make a, an abrupt decision without some consultation and let the community react to it. And so the hope is that this doesn't last six years. The hope is that, I, I mean, being straight up, the hope is this gets transitioned elsewhere after a couple of years, or SPAN comes back and says, "You know what? We've made a different decision. We want to keep it and we don't need that money for the long haul." It's a contract. The contract will have an out clause that either party can get out of at some point. If, if, if Johnny and the hospital district board doesn't feel that this properly serves, then that gives us the opportunity to, to reallocate those funds elsewhere. One of the things that we've talked about as a committee is continuing to be, work as a committee. And let me just tell you, this committee spent hours and hours and hours and hours on this to try to save the pro, the program, to put aside political differences, to put aside feelings of this or that, or someone doesn't like what, we've just rolled up our sleeves and gone to work and come up with not a great, perfect solution, but one that saves the community, saves fifty doctors for this community, helps the indigent in this community because losing these doctors helps, hurts the indigent the most because the indigent community statistically goes to emergency rooms more than anybody else percentage-wise. So to not have these doctors and lose fifty-two doctors in this community, the cost would be way more than twenty million dollars to this community. It would be immeasurable in, into it. Again, the hope is after about two years, we'll be able to transition this somewhere else maybe and, and not, the hospital district doesn't have to spend all the funds that has been allocated to this because no one wants to do that. The doctors don't want to do this. You know, they, they don't want the hospital district to have to spend this money. But at this point, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez had to leave because I was wanting him to hear some of this, was that they really feel that this is the only way at this point that we can save this for a period of time that gives us time, and Johnny said it well, this buys time. It's not perfect. It is definitely not something that, that is ever perfect. And if we had had a little more time and if we would have not had it dropped on us the way we did, maybe so. But at the end of the day, this is, is definitely something that we will be looking for other funding opportunities too. And I think that's important to note. One of the things the committee talked about was, "Look, let's, we can do this for now, but then we need to go to this type A board and the type B board," because we haven't even hit this from an economic development standpoint. If someone came and said, "We're going to bring fifty doctors to the community," I guarantee you that type A board or type B board would say, "Heck, yeah, I'll spend millions of dollars to bring fifty dol, fifty doctors. Okay, well, then let's spend some money to keep fifty doctors." That's what people forget. We all always talk about, "What can we do to bring great things to our community?" But sometimes you got to invest in what's here. And that's what this is. This isn't an investment in what's here. These people want to be here. They have fought to be here. They have unified like no group I've ever seen. They've come together and said, "We love Corpus Christi. We love the Coastal Bend. These residents love being here. We want to stay here, live here and work here." And I don't think any of them got married here or were from here. They, I know, I know, no, that was a good example. No, that's a good example, but the point is, a lot of these people didn't fall under your two categories and they're fighting to stay here. And the only way we can think of to fix this in forty-five days, which is what we've been doing, is this. And I, I know that's not perfect, but I'm, I'm committed, Commissioner Modas is committed. I know the judge, uh, committed by, by forming this committee. I know this court has supported this, but Commissioner Modas and I have committed to these doctors and this committee to keep this committee going, to find alternate sources so that the hospital district doesn't have to pay for this. We don't want them to have to pay this whole deal. Our goal is to have this figured out in a couple of years to where they're not having to even hopefully kick into that four million dollar level. Hopefully, it's only the, the one million and the two million and we're somewhere down the road and then it's a, and then it's a screaming deal if all we had to do is pay that amount. So I get it. I, I mean, it's, if, if I hadn't spent the gazillion hours on this, I would have reservations too. So that's why I'm trying to put out everything that I can put out so that everybody knows, and, and it's hard to do it in, in ten minutes when we've been working on it for thirty or forty or fifty hours in, in, in explaining it. But the long play here is SPAN has come to the table, realizes they, they probably need some time to figure this out. We know we need that second residency. The hope is, the hope is we will get SPAN to do a second residency. This residency might shift to another one and we'll end up with four residency programs in this community. The more residency programs, the better because that's another fifty doctors. And Commissioner Gonzalez is right. We need other kinds of doctors in this community too. We need other kinds of residencies. I would love to hear SPAN's plan for that second residency if this is not the one they want to keep long-term so we can shift this over to HCA or Driscoll or whoever, or keep it with the, the hospital district and, and do it. But this is an exciting deal. This is, this is something that, that, again, I, I wish it was better, but I think it's a good, good situation and I think it, it meets the needs. And to lose these doctors in this community would be tragic, monumental, and it's not only the doctors, it's all their families and all their, I mean, we haven't even started our, I mean, there's one doctor here, has four kids. I don't want to lose, I mean, you know, just start multiplying all the doctors and the families and all their kids. We're talking hundreds of people, not fifty-two. So, um, and, and you know what, Johnny? It's a fair point, um, because, because, you know, Commissioner Gonzalez did allude to the fact that I don't like to increase taxes and he's right, I don't. And, and this is, and, and I will keep, keep this in mind on your, on your budget next time, um, with the hospital district. Because now, I will look at other programs that maybe, you know, because we do, there's other programs that I don't always think we should be doing through the hospital district, but I support because other people on this court support. Um, and, and maybe we need to look at those too, but that's a fair ask. If you have to go up, uh, e, e, even though you've got some of the best reserves in town, quite honestly, having ninety million dollars, I believe, in reserves, we need to spend it. We need to spend it on the indigent. And Commissioner Gonzalez is right. If, if we need to come up with some other programs to do more, to tap into those reserves also, okay, you've got to keep a fair reserve balance, but I don't know if ninety million is a needed balance. I mean, that's more than Oasis County has. I mean, we've got twenty-five million and we're a hundred and thirty million dollar revenue, uh, budget. You're a thirty million dollar budget, you got ninety million. That's financial responsibility, so congratulations. But I don't disagree with Commissioner Gonzalez. If there's some other programs that we can do to spend some of that money other places as well as this, I'll look at those too and, and, and be happy to do that. So I, I think this is, is really, uh, an incredible, uh, arrangement that we had to do quickly, that we had to do fast, uh, but, but I think it's completely within the mission of what you do. And I will give great deference to the fact that you've had to do this when your budget comes up, up next time. That's a very fair ask of, of you to, to do that, and I will look strongly at that and all the other programs and, and what you do in the entirety. I, I think the first year and the second year is a little different than the, if it goes to four, five and six. And again, my hope is, is that it never gets to four, five and six, that we get this transitioned over, uh, somewhere else, um, that we don't have to spend that money. Uh, and that's why it's important so that you know, Commissioner, there is out clauses in this that we can, you know, uh, move away from it if, if it does transition. And like Johnny said, if they don't, if they get some additional funding, they'll have to repay and we're going to go to other places to look for funding sources. So, uh, I know that's a lot, but, uh, I wanted to kind of make sure and address, because we have spent, I, I can't even imagine how many hours on this thing. And I, I know it's, I've rambled a lot, but it's because we've just spent so much time on it and had so many conversations and getting it all out for the public to hear and for the Commissioner's Court to hear, I felt was important. So I appreciate the, the time on that, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Judge, I mean, one of the things that we heard from our doctors is that when many communities are, have taken this course in going to, uh, see that the hospital systems are eliminating, uh, ERs or residency programs for E, for the emergency rooms or emergency departments, um, we are probably the only one that has reversed course and actually gone in the wrong direction and reversed course and saved it. And that's something huge that, that today that message gets out, it goes out throughout the world, uh, that, that Oasis County has made this a priority. And it's not perfect. I mean, I think the knee-jerk reaction for all of us that have been a part of this has been, "This, this is not perfect. This doesn't sound right." And I agree. We all, I think we all would agree. But if it's about saving the program right now and the amount of time that we were given to be able to still give, um, these doctors a chance to interview and recruit and retain of some well-qualified residents, uh, we had to do it now. And so this discussion will continue, but I, I cannot say enough, and I've said this to several, uh, already, uh, Judge, without you creating this committee, I don't think this would have happened. The way that you, you compiled different, uh, perspectives from the county, from the The way that you compiled different perspectives from the county, from the commissioners' court itself, from the hospital district, from the doctors, from the community, Karen Urban has done wonderful work. She is a true advocate that just gave it just perfectly from the community's point of view. All of those that were included helped give perspective to this. And it's not over, there'll still need to be discussions in the future. But without you coming up with this, I don't think we would have had that opportunity. And it brought everyone together, it gave still opportunity for SPON and Johnny to work, kind of sidebar conversations and be able to work this out. And that's what this was all about, I feel, that why you created this, was to be able to have, kind of outside the formalities of a formal meeting, and have just the committee, ad hoc committee that you created, that were able to kind of have those conversations, to work this out, to have, push back, to have some frank conversations and feedback on this, and say, we may not think it's perfect, but at least it works, and at least it saves it for now. And so, I want to thank you for stepping up and creating that.
Thank you. Thank y'all for serving. Commissioner Hernandez, I think you wanted to speak.
Yes, Judge. Like my other two commissioners and some of the folks, I'm still confused, because at the end of the day, SPON's going to have the last word. Is that right? Johnny?
Well, Commissioner, in the context of the fact that it's their program in that facility, they do have sway over some of that, but, you know, they have to work with the hospital district. And we have an arrangement with them that benefits them in multiple ways. And so, you could say that it is their program and it is their facility, and they have the last say. But the hospital district has a big role in their economic situation. And so, when we have that role, we also have input.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, because I'm hearing things that Commissioner Cheston has brought up, said, I'm finding out things that we didn't know, we weren't privy to, because we haven't attended any of those meetings. And we get these things at the last minute, and we try to read through them, it makes sense. But, you know, you've answered some questions that I wasn't aware of, okay? And it's a good program, and I, for one, know directly that we do need the doctors here. I talked to a lot of people that said they can't find doctors, or doctors are retiring, you know, they just don't have, we don't have enough doctors, bottom line here in Corpus Christi, we don't have enough specialists. I'm waiting for, I've been waiting for a specialist for eight weeks, you know? So, I mean, I know, I hope it works, but I'm just saying, I'm still confused how it's going to really impact everything as you all propose it. And I appreciate the fact that all the work that has been done by our commissioners, the county judge, and the doctors are willing to bring out things, how they can make it better. So, that's all I'm saying, that at the end of the day, I think SPON's going to have the last word. And I hope it's in our favor.
And I think this was just an update, so we appreciate you all being here. I know, you know, we can only have two commissioners on that committee, so I apologize for the information not being shared more, but I wasn't in there as well. But I've talked to the doctors individually when they were waiting for the members to show up and stuff. I had the privilege because they're over there, so I totally understand, Commissioner Hernandez, what you're talking about. But we're very thankful for all the time y'all have given, for coming here, for all the meetings that you've been to and everything. So, thank you again, and let's see how this moves forward in the next year or two. We will, I'm sure, be getting updates from the hospital district as well, and hopefully you can all get back to your jobs and focus on what you do best. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
While they're moving out, if y'all want to look through your consent agenda to see if you have any items you wish to pull for further discussion.
You want to need item pole C?
C.
Which one, Dale?
C, item C.
Anything else? Anybody? Anything, Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
No? Then I will accept a motion to pass the consent agenda excluding item C. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item C, and Dale, what do you have with that one?
Yes, Your Honor, when we originally provided the information to you, there was an error on number 30 on the list for Enoch Cover P LLC for September. The amount on the report originally showed 10,000. Their actual invoice is $2,669. I would like to make that amendment to the report for the consent agenda for this November 29th, and that's the only change I have, Your Honor.
And that was 2,000?
2,669. And you should have received an updated form.
Yes. I will make the motion to pass item C with the amended amount for number 30 to be $2,669. Do I have a second? We have a second, Commissioner Gonzalez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. So, moving on to our regular agenda. Mr. Hip, you're here for another one. Do you, which item are you here for, so I don't keep you waiting all day? Oh, I think it might be one we're going to pull into executive, though.
It's item nine.
Yeah, we're going to pull that one into executive first. So, if you'd like to go do some work or something, you're more than welcome to use my office or the other conference room on the other side in the commissioners' court, the admin office, the little conference room in the back.
And thank you, Judge. The hospital district still has a role in that, and so I'd like to be here when y'all do that. Thank you.
Yes, and we don't mind having you back, and we'll bring it back out, but I think we probably need to bring it back there first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, A2, discuss and consider revised fee schedule for the medical examiner's office, which implements the cremation filing fee changes.
Motion to pass, Judge.
We have a motion to pass, and we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you very much for us for being here. Item three, discuss and consider the execution of the depository agreements, security agreements, third-party custodian agreements for the county and District Clark County funds. This is the Frost National Bank that we've gone back and forth and waited for. There's one thing that would need to be updated on there. They have delisted as the chief of staff, and Francisco said to update Peyton.
I'm moved.
So, we can move to pass with the updated information as my chief of staff, Peyton Velka. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And item number four, do we have a motion to table? I was told to table.
Motion to table till December 13th.
We have a motion to table till December 13th, so I have a second. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Item number five, discuss and consider deleting the ARPA manager position, and discuss and consider retaining the services of GrantWorks to handle the ARPA county precinct and countywide projects. I know, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I do have a couple of questions on this one. GrantWorks, I know Natalie was, she's here, and I know, can you come up to the podium, Natalie, please? My question's for you. I've had this brought to my attention on some other grants, so I want to clarify in here in court. I know if we hire you to do these jobs, ultimately, in the end, they have to go to, our GrantWorks has to file the paperwork, has to go. You would provide all the documents, and then Anna would have to send it up for a repayment. Is that clear on these grants, too?
The portal, the grant portal, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So I actually have Jessica Hissam, who's on the call with us today. She's a project manager for the ARPA program within GrantWorks. So she can actually tell you exactly, from the horse's mouth, when they're dealing with the grant portals for clients. Every client is different, so we tailor it according to really what works best for your internal practices. So if you, so grant portal access, you can do your own, and we can just give you the, tell you what to do, or we can have access and do it for you. Ultimately, it really just kind of depends on what you guys are comfortable with doing, but...
Have we ever given access to anyone else to our access? Anna, this will be both of y'all up here, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay.
That's just a clarification, because I've had another issue with a different grant this week, so I wanted to make sure in moving forward, we were clear.
In the previous one, like I said, with ERA, that's the one, yes, they would give us the information. We would enter it in through.
They didn't have access to our portal.
No, they would request, like from TIDAM, they might have access on that, the TIDAM would give them, but it would still have to come through us to where you would sign it, and then we would either upload it or, you know.
And I think that's a problem, you know? I think that we were just doing it to too many hands.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
And you got all confused, and some of it wasn't even being looked at and asked on. So I think if we're going to pay them to do it, they should be in the portal. They just do what they have to do, keep Anna informed, Anna has to monitor it, you know? But I think if we're going to pay them for it, they need to go the whole nine yards and let them in the portal.
Then what is the monitoring role for Anna, then? Either, I mean, that's where we've gotten into problems, because she's saying she can't get the information.
She can't. I don't see why not.
Well, that's when she is reporting it.
That's what happened with Hagerty, that we didn't have the information.
And from the different departments on individual projects, when that department doesn't turn it in or doesn't send the reports. I want to make sure that moving forward, whoever takes on this role understands it is their responsibility. It is their ultimate responsibility to go after these people, that you don't wait till the day before it's done, or to turn it in to our department if we have to have it. It has to be turned in timely. Or we're, I would like a history of all, of the money it has cost us because of not this communication. Public Works, auditing, grants, everyone, I know. And I just think we have to clean that up. We've got to do better. So if you, if we are voting on this, and I'm fine voting on this and giving it all to you, it is all your responsibility. I'm not going to have meetings with everybody saying, well, they didn't give it to me, and they didn't give it to me, and they didn't call me, and this person didn't contact me, and I didn't get a receipt. It will be your responsibility to go after all of those people. So I wanted to make that very clear before moving forward.
Yes. So, GrantWorks does fully help. When we take on this role, we do everything for you. There are ultimate sign-offs that we can't do because we're not authorized to do that. That's the obligation of the client, in this case, the county. So we would send any documents that are required to be reviewed and signed off on to you, and we keep an update.
And I do those all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Those are not a problem.
And we have a system in place that we provide routine reports to the county as well, so that the county is made aware of where things stand and how things are being done. They can even come to court and present on those items. And yes, so we can be as fully responsible for it as you would like us to be, or as removed as you would like us to be. In this case, it seems like you're asking us to take on the 100% responsibility over, which we would.
We won't have the position in the grants department to take this on, so that would mean you would be taking on the full position. Other than, we do have the funding, the attorney is still funded through 2026 that would be available to help and go over contracts or bids or prices, whatever they have to be.
That's correct, yes. So, but we would need then access to the grant portal to be able to do that. But there's, if I'm not mistaken, this grant portal also has an authentication process as well to access it. The ARPA doesn't, it's just the MIT mod? It's just the MIT mod. Okay, so...
Can we do that, Anna?
We can.
They have access to treasury, yes, and they can request it.
Yes. So, I'm gonna, I've got Jessica Hissam, and I want to give her a second to just kind of address it, because she's on the call, and this is what she does. So, go ahead, Jessica.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm Jessica Hissam. I'm one of the lead project managers on the ARPA team. And yeah, you guys are asking a lot of great questions, and it is definitely a concern. The fortunate part about what we do, and I have a whole presentation if we want to run through it, a very high level of what ARPA can provide through GrantWorks, but I can also immediately just address your questions, so whatever we want.
I don't think we're at that point yet, Jessica, but if you want to just address the questions, that'd be appropriate. Thanks.
No problem. So a big part of what we do is interdepartmental coordination. It's actually kind of one of our specialties. So ultimately, of course, we're going to need the collaboration of the county to send us expenditures and keep us updated on obligations, and let us know what role that you would like us to take, if there's any sub-recipient programs, how active you'd like us to be. But we will be doing that ongoing throughout the contract, so it wouldn't be a, hopefully, I'm not totally familiar with what happened before, but it wouldn't be a structure that would be a rush. We would be as fully, like Natalie says, as fully engaged with you guys through every single step of the project, not just reporting, if that was what you would like us to do. And if we are, we're ultimately very, very helpful during the report. It is a separate, it is a separate portal than TIDAM. It's the treasury's individual portal, so it works a little bit differently, but once we get access into it, the report itself can be fairly easy, and we're happy to help as much as we need to, so.
That's good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Jessica.
So we have the motion. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
So, will the grants department or the auditors provide them with the expenditures, the information that they're going to need to upload into the portals?
My staff does the reports.
The auditor's office is what it says in the agreement, the auditor's office, yes. Go ahead.
And just a question, as with any third-party consulting agent, it'll be by hourly rate?
Yes.
So, everything they do will be by hourly rate?
As far as the, what part?
Managing.
Any communication that they do.
Management, anything is hourly rate, not.
When they discuss things with the commissioner, with ours, with, it will, correct me if I'm wrong.
So that's actually based on the contract. If it's a lump sum contract, then it's based on lump sum. If there's a, the treasury does not require hourly, be the stipulation, or be the reporting style. So, it's actually dependent upon the contract itself. If the agreement is by lump sum, then that's the billing structure. So, based on milestones that are met throughout the course of the contracts or the construction themselves. So, now if the county would like to impose some kind of additional restriction that is more in line with their practices, then that's up to the county. But that's not a requirement by this grant, and that's, again, it goes back to the contract, what was originally agreed to. If it's a lump sum, it's very different. It's not hourly.
Okay.
And that would be as per the individual projects you would, well, you would have to do all of them. If we do away from the ARPA manager, it'd be all the ARPA projects, period. Yeah.
But I think we need an estimate of what that's going to be. Because, I mean, the ARPA manager is, we know what it costs, and I think we need some detail on that, because this is, I'm all for GrantWorks, y'all have done a great job, but this is going to cost us a lot more than the ARPA manager. And that's not a bad thing. I'm just saying, I'd like to know specifically what we're talking about, how much more cost this is going to be, because this is going to come out of the ARPA funds, which is going to be less money for us to do what we need to do with the ARPA funds. So, do we have that number?
Projects that we have already done.
Judge, I think that's in the item number six.
Yes, I was going to say, there's a subsequent item.
Well, I think we need to do item number six before we vote on this, then.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we should have put these in the opposite order.
We'll just do them together.
Yeah, we'll just bring it up together.
We can say five and six are on at the same time, right?
Judge, I may interject, the contract itself, I think, is a percentage contract based on the amount. Not to exceed. Not to exceed. Right now, the current setting is at a million dollars, so it's not to exceed a million dollars. The first task order, though, is based on an hourly rate, because they want to get in there.
Not to exceed a million on all the projects, or individual projects?
All the projects.
But including these that we're adding?
Correct. So the whole, the first task order that you're going to find on there is based on, this is what's going to cost them to go in on an hourly basis to check out what we already have. So they're going to look at our contracts, look at our policies, procedures, look at everything. So they're going to look at our contracts, look at our policies, procedures, look at everything that we have, that we've done so far and look at where we've allocated, that made the different allocations. And then they're going to come back and, and that's, that, that task order is three to four months. But according to Natalie, the commissioner wants them heavily hit it hard. So he wants at least three people working on this project at that point, just to get a determination of what the, where are we at, where we stand. And then at that point, we'll do a task order that's based on that percentage basis, not to exceed a million dollars, to, or whatever we determine, to finish up the rest of the projects.
But I mean, we still need an estimate here. I mean, I, I, I'm not, I can't vote on something that's just open ended because the ARPA manager costs us, I don't know, what, we're paying $90,000 a year for an ARPA manager?
It's $200,000 for two.
You had 300, I think, 350.
Right, right, so.
For years, yeah, so with benefits, everything, it's, yeah.
Right, that's where I was going, was, okay, so whatever the total cost of that ARPA manager was going to be, obviously, we're going to save, so that would go into the, the factor here, right? But I just would like to know some estimate, I, I mean, I can't just vote on, hey, let's hope and pray because this is, this is a big difference. I mean, we're talking about adding all these, you know, all these other projects, right? So we're talking, how, how many millions of dollars of projects are we adding to what we've already given them? Anybody have an idea on that?
Well, the total amount, I think, is 7, 31 million dollars, I think is the total.
That's on the CDBG stuff or that we've already given them?
ARPA, ARPA, 71.
71 million was originally.
So it would have been, it'd be two or three, two point, I believe it's 2.5 or 2.9% of the 30 million as a percentage.
So they're going to be involved now in all 70 million of our projects?
Or all, whatever, whatever projects that are available that have yet to be.
Okay, so where is that in detail? I mean, I, I need to know what that is going to cost. I mean, that's, that could be, we, we could be adding a million bucks to this budget, I don't know. We could be adding $5, I don't know, because I don't see that anywhere in the breakdown that I've gotten and that's what I, I can't just vote on something without knowing what it's going to cost and it, it could exceed the million dollars that we've given them an up to, right?
Well.
The contract going to say not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
Right, but it's still, but we still have to know, like, are they going to work on these? Like here, we've already assigned them the CBDG plant projects, right? That's already been done and that's up to a million dollars for CBDG. Now we're coming back, right? That was the original contract. Now we're coming back and we're saying, we're going to add, I don't know what, but we're going to add more projects at a percentage on an hourly rate. So there's got to be a way to give us some estimate of what this is going to cost extra before we vote on it. Meaning not just like sitting right there, y'all are going to have to come back and show me this and we can do it later today, but I, I mean, I can't vote on something.
Vote without an amount.
Without an amount.
Or do it as per job, if you want to use them on your jobs and take it out of your funds, then, I mean.
Or take it out of the fund project, yeah, I, like.
Of your individual funds, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that's fair. I mean, if Commissioner Gonzalez wants to use it on the project and he, that budget's set in, he brings that in and we all look, I, I don't, we've got to, I just got to have some number, but other than.
Right, so to be, to, to, to be clear and make sure we're kind of all on the same page here. The CDBG is a totally different thing, is covered by CDBG, okay? The ARPA funding, the contracted amount is not to exceed a million dollars. There's a task order that's falls beneath the original umbrella contract of not to exceed a million dollars that has a breakout of a belief, correct me if I'm wrong, about 140 an hour through the end of this year, which is to be utilized to discover basically where you guys stand. Because as of right now, Grant Works, we don't know, we haven't been brought to the table yet to see where you are on all of the projects ARPA wise and what the progress has been on those. And we're going to need multiple people to sit down and comb through all of the documentation that currently exists to identify where you stand with your ARPA projects, what progress they're in and get a handle on what, what is currently allocated to certain projects. And so the, the work, the task order is to be used for that purpose, for us to be able to sit down and start looking at where you guys are. Once that has been identified and we can clearly say this is the next path forward, then we, that task order will end. We will create a new task order that you'll then have to agree to that'll be based upon our new founded level of understanding of where you stand in your current projects and what needs to be done to get you guys across the finish line.
And that's good clarification that you, so it's two phases, what you're telling me. I still need a number on phase one. So if you're coming in here and you're asking for additional monies that we have not already contracted you for, then I need to know, because normally, if someone's going to bid on something or make a proposal, we don't pay for the preparation to make the proposal. So that's a little bit of a different ask for you to say, we need you to pay us.
Because we're double paying because we've already started it in grants.
It's a little bit of a tough ask for me, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to listen to it, but it's a little bit of a tough ask when you come in and say, I, I'm going to have to go spend a bunch of money to tell you how much more money you got to spend and how much we're going to spend of your money. But I'm getting a little dicey on that one because most of the times, people come in and they make a proposal and they say, we'll do this for you for X and then we decide, you're saying, we're going to charge you to tell you how much we're going to do it for.
It's part of the million dollar, not to exceed.
I get it, but you're still asking for money that we haven't already talked about or allocated for.
So the total amount, what we did is we were requested to put a task order together that would encompass what we felt we needed to do in order to come and say, okay, we need to, we need to come to the table and have a conversation and look at where you stand. We're happy to take on the full workload, but part of being able to do that is sitting down and identifying where you are and what we need to do to get you all across the finish line.
But why would that cost? Why wouldn't that just be an evaluation? You would, in other words, if you were making a blind proposal to us, coming in and you weren't already under contract, we wouldn't pay you to put together a proposal to tell us what you're going to do the next round. You'd just come in with a proposal and say, here's what it's going to cost.
Typically, we don't do it this way.
Right.
We've done it this way because we, we were under the impression that a task order was being requested and y'all wanted to see that breakout of what it would cost us to sit down and do it.
I don't know, the court, did the court make that request or just, an individual commissioners can ask for stuff too?
Yes, it was, it was a request by a commissioner and so we put together the task, the top, the task order, the work order. Typically, when we have a lump sum contract, it, it's included in that, that we're going to spend time at the table sort of discovering or going through, you know, developmental phases of talking about our projects. That's just a given. In this case, it was broken out so that an hourly rate could be placed to and we could actually see where we were headed. Ultimately, the overall contract is not going to exceed a million dollars to include all, all activities that Grant Works is going to provide, which is full management and administration to close out. So even if when we sit down under this, the first task order or work authorization, however you want to call it, that's not to exceed the 87,000, that's reduced from the million dollar cap. So we're not talking about exceeding a million dollars, we're talking, we're working up to.
I, I appreciate that, but I don't want to spend a million dollars.
I know that.
I said that at the beginning too, right?
You did.
We put this in, like, I get it, I'm glad you're saying it's not going to exceed a million because I don't support it if it supports, if it goes that way.
It's not going to go over that, yeah.
Right, so that, but I mean, at the, so at the end of the day, so what do you, do you have any idea what it's going to cost for this first task order that you're talking about? Not the second one, but just.
Yeah, the first one, so the first one is to really engage us so that we can actually just start working on things and looking at where y'all are and kind of start moving things along. We honestly figured, we, we put together a proposal of $145 an hour, not to exceed 87,000. The period performance ends on December 31st, so.
Wait, 87,000, okay, so.
Not to exceed, not to exceed.
Okay, but.
The document has.
So you want 87,000 to tell us how much you're going to cost to spend in the next round?
Part of the 1 million dollar not to exceed, I know.
Commissioner, they've still got to review everything that's already on the table to see if it's done correct, to see if you can move it forward. I mean, it's not like you say, okay, here's what we've done, now you go to the next step. I mean, how do we know that what was done is done right? You know, what else do we need to do?
We, we have to be able to come to the table and go through where you guys are and see what's been done or not done and then be able to give adequate advice, sound advice based on what's discovered.
And you can't get that from the ARPA manager that's still employed by Nuasis County? I mean, technically, the ARPA manager is still involved, in charge of this until we release her. So what, what can't you get that's going to cost me, not me, that's going to cost the county an additional 87,000 to up to, not to exceed? But if you're coming in, not to exceed, you're going to spend 86,5, whatever. I mean, you're not coming up with a number that you're not going to probably spend close to, right?
Right, no.
No, you're being transparent about it. So, but, but why would I want to spend 87,000 of ARPA funds when I got an ARPA manager that ought to be able to relay to you what you need so that you can then make a proposal to get after it? And, and I don't even know exactly what the proposal is you're going to make to get after it is.
Neither do we, Commissioner.
Right, so how do I, I don't know how to spend it, I don't know how to authorize it.
We're, we're in that same boat. We've got to be able to sit down and go through things and it's, and it's going to take multiple staff members of our own in time to sit and do it, so.
Even the 87 million, 87,000, sorry, 9 million.
Yes, no.
Is, is ARPA manager's annual salary and you're talking a couple of weeks, a month and a half. I mean, it's kind of, the number is a little bit alarming.
It is, and I see.
The performance ends on this task order says February the 29th. You mentioned December.
Yes, our, our actual work authorization that we submitted ends December 31st, 2023.
I think it's been updated to December, Chris, are you saying 87,000 for a month?
Yes, four months.
Up, not to exceed, so we are not saying it's going to take that much. What we're saying is the hourly rate is 145, so we could very well get all this done within three weeks. And when we originally submitted this, it was a month ago, but it's been a table discussion. So we haven't been able to sit and really look and digest anything. At the time that we submitted this, the 87,000 seemed more appropriate, potentially based on the amount of time that was left within the year. As of today's date, obviously, there's only a couple of weeks left in this, the rest of this year. So I don't think we'll get anywhere near close to that. We were just trying to leave some room unless we, in case we needed to keep working under this current work authorization.
So based on, you said 140 an hour?
145.
145, let me make sure I do it right then. So 87,000 divided by 145 hours, your, your estimate a month ago is you're going to need 600 hours to get us to know where we were on all our projects? That's staggering.
It was a, it was a ballpark figure in case we needed to go that route to get us through the end of the year. It's not something that we're, and it's not to exceed. We don't think we're going to bill anywhere near that amount because it's hourly. So if we have five staff members that are on this so that we can get it done in two weeks to see where we're at, then at 105.
What are you going to do? Tell me what you're going to, I'm, I'm just trying to, and again, this is the first time we've had the opportunity to discuss it. I'm sure a lot of these discussions were had other places that, because you can't have them with the whole court, I get it. And it's the same thing as the, you know, the committee, we can only have two members there. It's, you know, on that, that deal, it's the same thing with this.
That's the challenge.
You know, we just don't, this is the first time we've gotten it, other people have seen it and, and as they should because it's their, their thing, so I got no, no issue with that.
I don't mind at all, so.
But I'm just trying to figure out what it is you're going to do for 600 hours.
Well, so the first part is we need to sit down and we need to have conversations with the county, have it be the current ARPA manager that you still have or any other officials or persons you deem the appropriate parties to talk to. We have to sit down and we have to figure out, okay, how did you originally intend to spend your money? How are y'all going to allocate your funds? Then based on that, we're going to review all the reporting that's taken place. Then we need to vet that all those processes have been followed thoroughly and accurately and that none of it's been done incorrectly. That takes time.
But we have lawyers and we have the Grant Works, we have other people, I mean, our projects are allocated. There's very few that are on our high risk left. We have gone through the approval process. So moving forward, I think the projects are determined and they have been vetted by the attorneys or Grant Works or whoever, so now what would you do?
Yeah. Well, we trust that, but, but please understand from our level of understanding of what you guys have done thus far, because we don't know. We, we still have to do our due diligence and we still have to look at it too.
I really don't think it's a good statement just because we tell them to take responsibility for the whole thing. You know, if something happens before they took responsibility, it's going to fall back on them.
No, it's not.
So yes, it is because they've taken over the whole thing. We got to tell them a while ago, they're going to be responsible for the whole thing. Well, the whole thing starts from the beginning, to make sure everything was done right, you know, to make sure that the, everything in the process and we're done right, who's pending? You know, I've got a lot of questions still, we had the last meeting, they haven't been answered.
Wait, wait, we're going to go back in time?
Who's pending, who's, who's complete? I mean, a lot of stuff has not been answered yet.
Pre-approved project?
Wait, wait, you're saying you want to go back in time and check everything?
Teresa wants to clarify something.
If, if you look at the, the task order, it explains everything that they're going to do, the review, the analysis that they want to do right now to see where they're going to go with ARPA. I mean, it's.
I, I.
And, and it's verification of what we've already done as far as what Lulu has done, the, the processes and what we've already done.
Yeah.
But that's the scope of what they're saying, they need to vet and verify and move forward with.
Oh, wait, I don't want to do that. I, I want to take them from here forward, meaning if we're going to hire you now and if we've got some concerns that the ARPA manager hasn't done something right, then someone needs to tell me that because I don't know of those, okay? So if those conversations have gone on and I'm not aware of those either, then we need to say that and say it out loud. Otherwise, I thought this was just going to be, they're going to take on it from the point at which they take it. I have no anticipation of going back and triple checking Lulu for the last two years. If that's, no, but.
Then we need to make a motion to Treasury Commission to take over, not hold accountable for anything before that.
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I don't want, if that's part of what you're having to do.
Not accountable, okay, then taking over the work on the documentation and finishing and proceeding with jobs that have already been pre-approved by someone else.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's, maybe that's where the disconnect is.
I think because that's where I would want to move forward because I know even on my project, because we talked to Texas Association of Counties, we've talked to everyone. So I really feel like it's double payment and wasting of funds to go back and do that same process again. And I don't want to stop and halt my problem, you know, I'm supposed to go out for work authorization. Come January, I believe we're ready to move, so yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
I'm just wondering, I want to clarify something. We won't find out any of this till Treasury questions something or.
That's correct.
Has it been done from the previous ARPA manager? Has Treasury looked over or asked to approve something and have they?
The ARPA is reported to Treasury on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
All, everything, it's been vetted also with the county, the auditor's office. They're aware, we provide everything that's in our financials. We have to provide everything that's come to court, that's been approved. Everything has been reported in, on a quarterly basis, yes.
And I mean, we've been told.
Attorneys that we have had.
Again, everything has gone through the county attorneys, collaboration, contracts. Everything has been vetted out.
So, yeah, I have no desire to go backwards, zero. If that's what this is about, then that's the disconnect because that's what I'm not understanding is why we have to spend all this money. Now I'm understanding is if, if you're, if the thought is you're going to have to go backwards in time, okay, well, that now I get, I, I'm not interested in that.
And also, as far as the reporting has been from last court, all monies have been allocated already. There is no unallocated besides what each commissioner or judge has on their own allocation, so.
Yeah, so I think we got to, yeah, now I understand.
But we haven't had any feedback from Treasury, right?
It wasn't cleared in the last report though.
Commissioner Hernandez is still talking?
I'm done.
You're good, thank you, sorry.
It's all right, you're used to it.
So as far as, I was just reading a note from, from Jessica. Treasury isn't individually reaching out about anything reported yet as far as where, where. So that's not just necessarily a Nuasis County thing, that's a, in period, across the board thing. But yes, to a certain extent, we, we still have to come to the table. Be that as it may, that things have already been submitted and done by Nuasis County, part of our due diligence to take on full responsibility and take, and say that all reporting is accurate. We still have to spend time looking at what's been done, even if it takes us a week to do it. I mean, we still have to be able to look. In order for us to even know where we're headed, we have to know what the vision was getting to where we're at to be able to carry it forward. And right now, Grant Works, we don't know. We, we haven't had those conversations, we haven't looked at any of those documents because we haven't been engaged. So that's what that hourly rate was supposed to include, was supposed to give us the opportunity to sit down and look at where you are. That way we can move forward. to sit down and look at where you are, that way we can move forward. Um, and we're not trying to overcharge anything here, but we were asked to provide what we felt was a responsible hourly rate to get it done, and we really, based on, you know, we, we went with the hourly rate, we had to put a cap on it 'cause that was the comfort level at the time, and so we, we placed one, it doesn't, we don't expect it to get to that amount, we just, really, um, we're really just trying to move this forward so that we can sit down and have the ability to look at where you guys are and know how to get you guys to the end of it, so.
And Judge, that, this, I'm sorry, this is, is clear as mud for me now, so, everything that we've done so far has been, has been vetted, and we have no indication that there's anything wrong with anything that we've done thus far. In fact, to the contrary, you came in and made darn sure that some of the stuff that we, that the, that was done incorrectly before you were here got cleaned up. So, you have been super diligent in working with the county attorney and the auditor and grants and Lulu, and making darn sure that we were in compliance, so to, to, to go backwards and, and do what she's projecting now is unnecessary and, and not at your fault, but it's a waste, in my opinion, to do because you've, you've done it. Now, Judge, if, if you believe we've got some holes somewhere because you've been the one most involved in cleaning up the ARPA messes that we had to clean up, then you need to say so, because I, I just thought we were hiring, looking at hiring them.
To manage the projects moving forward, not to go back and re-vet.
Right, because our, our grant manager, yeah, because she left, she took another job, let's be, let's be, you know, we have an ARPA manager who decided to take another job within the county, which is great, I'm sorry she left, but that's great, it's a permanent job, the ARPA manager job was a, only funded through a period of time. I, this concept makes sense to me because it's hard to find someone to do a job for two years, that you gotta train and get up to speed, and, you know, I get that, I knew it was gonna cost a little bit more, but I think there has to be, I, I think there needs to be a proposal that just says, here's what it's gonna be going forward, and let us digest that, not going back in time, because I think we're okay.
And we can, you can put in your document that these were pre-approved, you didn't approve them going forward, whatever, I, I have no problem with moving forward with that. What I would like to say to everyone up here is, this is really important, we're getting to the stage where all these projects are gonna be taking place, and we do not have the manpower or the personnel to take care of it, so this is an excellent idea moving forward.
Agreed.
With them doing that, so, as, as long as it's not backtracking and whatever we have to put to clear you and your company name or anything like that, I'm fully on board with, but I, I think we absolutely need you and need your help, and, and this is the point in the next year or two to get these projects to completion, that we have to do something like this.
So, we've got two things, we've got a contract that's on the agenda today, which is the general contract, right? And then we've got the wor, the, the work order that was placed. Do we need to just omit the work order and just enforce the contract, giving us the ability to engage, or do you want a, a work order that's going to be?
I want a proposal, financial proposal, that's what I would like. I, I can't vote to support anything today without a financial proposal. I agree with what Judge said, and Commissioner Gonzalez brought this forward, whoever did this, great idea, super great idea, but I gotta have more, I gotta have more specific, I need to know what it's gonna cost, based on going forward, not going backward.
You would like to see milestones and that sort of thing.
Just something, yeah.
Okay, outside of the original proposal we submitted?
Or maybe do it by dollar, if your project is a million dollars, this is what you can expect to pay for our work or something, the variance or something.
Sure.
For the individual people, so he knows on his project.
Sure.
What it's gonna cost, I mean.
Yeah, we can work on something, I was just trying.
There's a, a level or something that.
Sure, I was trying to think outside of the original RFP proposal that we submitted back when this was open, because we included it in that, but that included other services as was requested out of that, so we can, we can do something very similar, just specific.
We can get you a list of all of our projects, if you could do, like, an individual one and cost estimated for your projects would be this, or something, would maybe, that would maybe be even better.
Give us an option.
But I, I think we absolutely have to have this, we need it, please.
Sure, sure, yeah, we can, we can do it however you guys want us to do it, we just, yeah.
That would probably, for me, be a better, better plan.
Sure.
And the ARPA manager's still in place until we say she isn't, so she's still here at the county.
Moving things, yes.
Well, she hasn't been relieved of her duties, she may have taken another job, but I'm still calling her, because, you know, to, to ask her stuff when I need to, and so it's not like she left and left the county, right?
Right.
So thankfully, so she's still here, so it's, we, I, I think this is a great concept, but I also think we need to hammer it down a little tighter, and she's still here, so we're not left out in the cold until we get this in place. So it's, it's important, but it's not of an emergency status, that we get, have to do it today because Lulu's still here, so, but, but I agree, I think we, I think we all agree that we, we wanna do this.
If you could get it back, we could bring it back on the, on the thirteenth, if you could, can you do something that, that quickly?
I think so, yes.
And that's one of the things I wanted to ask, is, I mean, this, it's not necessarily emergency, like, within weeks, but every week counts, that's my concern.
Yeah, we need to be moving forward, yeah.
It's like, I, I get what y'all are saying, as far as we wanna vet everything and have a better proposal, but I worry, too, that, I mean, these weeks, these days are adding up, and we're getting closer to that finish line, so the sooner that we can get Grant Works on, the better.
And just to make you aware, Commissioner Judge.
In December, forget it.
Lulu is still very much dedicated to the ARPA projects, and she is still working on them, working with my stuff, um, with the grants, other grants.
Working with my office, she was just here the other day, so yes.
She is still reporting, responding to anybody that asks, and she's still looking at the doors.
Because I, I do agree, we need someone to move, help us move forward, I, I strongly feel and believe that Grant Works can and should do that work for us. Um, I, I, I would wanna make sure that we have, not just a consensus, but full support from the court on this, 'cause it's such an important decision.
Absolutely.
But, so do you think that you could have all the data and, and a proposal for us to take action by December thirteenth, by that, our next meeting?
Oh, I know she can.
Okay, so Commissioner spoke for you.
I know she can.
You heard him. Yes, we can, we can have it done by the thirteenth, um, we'll just need to make sure that this week is comprehensive of the projects since we're asking for that.
I just wanna make sure that you engage with Lulu and Lulu engages with you, whatever you need, it, it should be on the table.
Yes, absolutely.
If we could have a meeting with Lulu, just a call, since we're wanting to put the price points by project, if we could have a call like as early as this week?
You will follow Anna, she will get you that set up, yes.
So we can go through the projects?
And if anything, uh, if, um, our dates don't come out, but, you know, the times, but everything is still on the court.
Yeah.
And we presented all the projects, everything's outlined, the dollar amounts, but we will.
We'll make it available, 'cause add me in on that meeting and we'll have it in the conference room if we need to, so.
That's great.
Judge, one more point?
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more point? I think also, we need to look at this as a hybrid, because we have a grants department for a reason, and this is a grant. So, I, I get that y'all have plenty to do, but I also think y'all need to stay involved and have a role in this.
Of course.
Meaning, um, so I'm looking for, I, I would like to see some sort of hybrid presentation, I think it's great to have Grant Works on as a, in some capacity, but I still think it needs to fall to, to grants, 'cause this is a grant, it's what it is, I mean, it's a grant, it has to fall under grants, so this all still needs to run through grants with hu, with, so, so then, so I think you have to be intimately involved in this putting together with Natalie, because this, we're still gonna look to grant, I'm, I'm still looking to grants, they're just a consultant to the grants department in the way I look at this, if we, if we do this. I, I don't think it's, they're a consultant of the court, I think it all still has to run through you, 'cause every grant needs to go through you in some capacity. I get that you're gonna need expert, some subject matter expertise on certain things and so forth, but you do have, Lulu has a lot of subject matter expertise on ARPA.
Yes.
But I'm okay with providing some additional help, because this is so important that we do it right, but I really don't wanna spend a ton of money that we don't have to spend, that we could spend on projects, if we also have people in grants who can do some of the work.
Yes.
So that's just my perspective, it may not be what the court's perspective is, but I think it's worth at least y'all having.
And just like everything else, bottom line, it does fall on Oasis County, so it, it's, it's gonna be them working, uh, any other third-party consultant, but bottom line, it's still Oasis County, it's gonna be, they're putting in information in the Treasury under Oasis County.
I think, I think I'm looking, I'm looking more at the consultant, I'm looking at them
doing the work, I mean, that Lulu was gonna do, they're doing the work, it's, it's more than a consultant.
We have a lot of jobs coming up with a lot of documentation, that's gonna be necessary, a lot of paperwork trails, we cannot afford to not get it correct, and the county has to pay that.
Right, but as directed by grants and the county judges' office, right?
Correct.
Because if, if Juan hires an outside engineer, he's still responsible for that project.
Understood, yes.
If Edward hires an outside vendor, he's still responsible for that project, so you're still gonna be responsible, so you, I know you're gonna be like in there.
Yes, sir, I mean, that's what, you know, we just need to stay in communication, um, and be, stay involved in.
Can probably set up quarterly meetings together, either Teams or something online, so, um, we're gonna move this to the December thirteenth meeting to bring it back, I make a motion for that.
And to withdraw his motion, there's a motion.
Oh, there is a motion already, we need you to withdraw your motion.
And, and I, I'm sorry, I had one question for Natalie, we got caught up in some questions that, so this is a, a, a particular amount, a finite amount, but I guess a lot of entities can do by percentage?
Mm-hmm.
And that, is that what you're proposing or will be proposing?
So it sounds like, based on, on conversation today, yes, they're wanting to see some type of a, of a financial scale that's based on projects, and so that would probably be percentage-based upon each individual project, so that probably, from earlier comments, um, if a commissioner would like to cover expenditures out of their allocation, I'm thinking maybe is the reason for that, but, yes.
Because there are no leftover funds to put into this, so it would have to be the individual projects covering the cost.
So we'll build that, we're gonna build a, a, a financial structure based on that, so, and we'll set up a meeting for this week if possible, 'cause I wanna, in order for us to have the right amount of time to build that out for the thirteenth, we need to make sure we have all the necessary documentation to consider in building that plan, so it would have to be this week, so.
Because the deadline's Tuesday next week, just so you all know.
Yeah, that's like even less time.
For the agenda?
Okay.
Then.
Well, deadline for what?
We can help you with that.
Okay.
All right.
But, uh, we will set up the meeting this week, and actually, if y'all wanna go next door, get with Peyton, I'm pretty sure I'm available Thursday morning or Friday, either one, so.
Okay.
Let's see what we can do.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Um, you're gonna withdraw your motion, the motion we had, and so now we need a motion to bring this back to December the thirteenth, I'll make that motion, somebody wanna second it? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign.
Five. You have six.
Huh?
Now you have six.
I, we do them together, so.
Yeah, we had them on, we had them on the agenda together, we called them together.
We called them together.
Original?
Yeah.
Or did y'all edit in afterwards?
We, we brought the item up and said we'll do it at the same time, so, I mean, we're, we're hearing them at the same time, so we tabled them at the same time.
But we really, I, we'll just bring them back, however, they'll put a new motion on for the thirteenth, 'cause they're kind of.
Five and six.
Included, okay. Item number seven, I see JJ back there, discuss and consider selection of ICE, um, engineering for services master service contract for ARPA-funded drainage improvements, Petronilia Estates. Um, I would accept a motion to consider, um, selection of them and authorizing and approving work order number three in the amount of a hundred ninety-nine thousand.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, the only thing I would like to point out before moving forward, and I've had many, many discussions with Lulu to help with this, I know there are differences in jobs, some people do time and materials, some people do percentage of completion, I know that is gonna be an option for us in the future, but I, I think there's been some discrepancy, and I apologize to you for some of your invoices, because I think they've been requiring both time and material and percentages, and I know that you don't do that, you either do, you have milestones for percentage of completion, I wanna make sure that we're clear in the court that we do offer both options, and that in the future, this won't be such a difficult moving forward for you and your projects, so. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider authorizing and approving work authorization number four, in the amount of ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents with ICE under master service contract for drainage improvements at Belk Lane, and I believe this is yours, too.
Agreed.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. Item number nine, I want to take into executive and, um, the code for that one, Jenny would be in contracts, I would assume, what, what's the number for that one? I'll need to put it for my notes for in a minute, you can tell me in a minute.
That one, you can, uh, under oh-seven-one?
Oh-seven-one.
Because it's, it's legal issues, not just the business decision of a contract.
Okay. Um, item number ten, discuss and consider the upcoming Commissioners Court meeting dates, uh, workshop dates and related matters, and your, next year's plan is not on here for the dates, is that on next month's? Yes.
The December meeting.
Yes, okay. Uh, then, we only have one meeting in December the thirteenth, so I assume everybody's fine with that. Okay, item B, public works, is, um, discuss and consider taking action regarding County Road Eighteen bridge repairs located at the intersection of County Road Eighteen and Sixty-Five. I know these repairs have already been done, is Juan here?
I'd like to go ahead, I'd like to, it's my item, call JJ to come up and.
Oh, it's JJ, okay.
Kinda explain a little bit of what, what we did, what's been done, in order to make this bridge a safe bridge, uh, so, um.
And this is a temporary fix?
Do you have the, uh, Jenny, do you have the?
What's her name?
Whatever.
Waring Commissioners, good, good to be here today. I hadn't been here in a while, so I missed it.
I've been called different things.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a few photos there of that, that bridge rehab, as y'all recall, Texas dot issued a, a letter closing this bridge, uh, several months back, and, uh, Commissioner was going back and forth there with the drainage district as far as who's responsible for fixing and, uh, Commissioner was going back and forth there with the drainage district as far as who's responsible for fixing it, but the, uh, the extent of the damage was, was pretty bad, and so the bridge, the bridge was closed. Uh, what happened on the bridge is the undermining on that, let me, I'll go real quick through those, through the slides that you're seeing, so on the, at first, right there, you'll see the one photo there where the bridge is shown that is closed, and then that, that undermining, the photo on your, on your right-hand side, it, that's between the bridge and the road. So that, what happened, all that material that was, uh, that was, you know, big, that would hold the road back, washed out into the, uh, into the, uh, bridge abutment, and then went down, downstream with the, uh, with the water and the storm, so if you go to the next slide, you'll show, see, so right there, that's the condition that it was in. And you see there on the picture, both on, on left, you'll see right there by that, by that support column where that, that bottom section of the, um, of the abutment's gone, so that soil behind the retaining wall was, was, or abutment was, uh, undermining. And then the photo on the, on the right, you'll see one of our guys are looking into basically how we're all that, all that soil came. So behind, the, the backfill behind that, the timber wall is basically what holds up your road. Uh, and then I know it took a little bit of time, so over the, between, you know, getting the project approved and everything, we had more undermining happen at the time, so. So we did, if we go to the next photo, the next slide. So we did here is, we came in and we secured the, uh, the abutment of the bridge, uh, so we could retain those, uh, those, that backfill, you know, back. And then we, uh, did some, uh, some access points from the top, and we, uh, put in some flowable fill, so it's a sand and cement mix, uh, to be able to like, you know, fill every void that's, that's under that road and behind that, that abutment wall, and then keep that material from coming out with that wall we created there. Another thing that we saw that, that, um, that we recommended, and that was Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Jag and worked on it is, so when you have trucks up and, and farm equipment approaching the bridge, usually the part that starts to fail away is that, that, just that, the entrance to the bridge, you know, the, the asphalt wears down, and then you have rain and puddles start forming, and all that, all that water, you know, goes into the, the subsols, and it kind of, you know, degrades the, uh, the, uh, backfill behind, behind it. So what we did, we created a concrete approach on both sides, so that way we lessen that impact to that farm equipment or trucks, or whatever, whatever, uh, traffic goes through there. So, so it goes into pavement, into concrete pavement, and it goes into the bridge, so we, we, we were able to, uh, to, um, you know, provide a better product that will last, uh, last longer than, than usual. And then we go to the next, next slide there. So there you see, uh, we were there on the bottom of the bridge, uh, from the, uh, from the ditch itself, looking back. So we put an asphalt coating on the, um, on the new abutment wall, and then you can see on the right-hand, right-hand side where we poured the new concrete on the, on the approach on bo, on both sides. And we go to the next photo there. So there, you see a photo on the, on the left, this, uh, was me and my son inspecting the rip bar on a, I think it was a Sunday evening, so he gave it the thumbs up, so we went out there, and then the, the, uh, next day or so, they poured the, on that Monday following, they poured the, uh, the approach. And then on the photo there on the right, uh, you'll see the, uh, the, uh, abutment already fixed, uh, and also some rip wrap underneath some, that white rock that you see, the lining, that's a blue rock that we put in there to help and prevent erosion and stuff like that, so. So the bridge is, is ready, it's already, concrete's already cured more than twenty-seven days, so I, I believe, we're already open, Commissioner?
Why, we opened it, right?
Yes. Yeah. So.
So now is Tex dot not going to fix it? It looks too good.
It's, it's, yeah. From what I understand, I. From what I understand, that the county, y'all, y'all apply for a Tex dot grant.
Yeah.
They do, I've dealt with those Tex dot grants before, and they, they, they come and they rebuild the whole bridge, but they usually take two, three years sometimes, sometimes even longer.
I thought this one was already on the list, Tex dot already had it.
Yeah.
Recognized to fix or some, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Looks like you did pretty extensive repairs, so it was like, aw, man, they're not going to come back and get it.
It was quick, but it was good, if they take longer, you'll, you'll have a, you'll have a bridge for a while.
Thank you.
A safe, a safe bridge.
No, safe bridges.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Want anything with Tex dot, as far as, uh, you would let them know that we have repaired them in the body?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, we notified once the, the bridge was, was repaired, uh, we contacted Tex dot. Tex dot was notified, and we took off the barricades, so we, to allow traffic to go through the bridge. So it is open at this time.
There's nothing that we need to vote on, on this or anything, so.
I'd like to mention to, to Jenny, have Jenny, uh, if we find out it really belongs to District Number Two, we probably just send them an invoice, and this came out of my budget, right, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Item number two, under Public Works, discuss and consider adopting an order pursuant to Section two-five-one-z, dot zero-one-three of the Texas Transportation Code, changing the name of Bernice Drive to Bernice Lane. And we had that public hearing, first thing at nine o'clock this morning, there were no comments or anything, so.
Move to change the name of Bernice Drive to Bernice Lane.
We have a motion and a second. Brent and Modus. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of change order number four for the Neoces County Courthouse ADA improvements and project upgrades.
Uh, Judge Commissioners, this is for the ADA project here at the courthouse. Um, we've had, uh, several items that, we had some deductions and some additions to, to the contract. Uh, this was some items that were unknown items, and in addition, some items that we didn't have to do as part of the contract. So this is a change order, it's an, it's a, pretty much, it's under the, it's under the actual, uh, project, it's, we're going to be saving about twenty-nine thou, twenty-nine thousand dollars overall on the project.
So we didn't go over budget?
We didn't, we didn't go over, we were under the budget, yes, ma'am.
Very good.
I need a motion and.
When is the last day, when they, they're out?
Uh, the last day is supposed to be this, this week, Commissioner, I know we have a punch, a set of punchless items at, uh, the.
And we didn't have any backup on this, we don't have the, the notice on that, yeah, there's nothing.
There's no backup, Judge, I'm sorry.
It wasn't. Did you get anything on the ADA?
Yes, it's, the change orders were attached.
I didn't, if nothing's in my book, nothing's in mine either.
Contract?
Uh-huh.
Right.
I don't have anything. I didn't get anything, so.
All right.
Or didn't, I think we had some trouble with the printer the other day too, so, um.
Okay, if it's under budget, it's good.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, did we have a motion?
I will.
Okay, we have a motion, and Hernandez seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners, thank y'all.
Moving on to purchasing, item three, C-one, discuss and consider authorizing approving amendment number two to the agreement, this is the restaurant service Shoreline Sandwich Center downstairs. This is increasing their rent for.
Thirty-five, thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, not a major, but it is increasing, it is not less, so.
Yes, it's, uh, per the contract, we have a CPI increase, and that's the calculated amount.
Make the motion to pass.
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Jag.
Commissioner Gonzalez, second, I made the motion, he seconded, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Um, two, discuss and consider the conditional selection of Anderson Columbia for hot mix asphalt concrete. I make the motion to pass.
Second.
Commissioner Hernandez seconded, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Um, the auditor, D-one, discuss and receive a schedule of important deadlines for conversion to workday, yay.
Yes, Your Honor, we have several issues coming up, as we know, we're going to be starting workday very soon, and January the first is our first starting day. Uh, there's going to be some, some kind of times when we need to have some expenses done, as well as our personal, uh, action items to, to reduce, to make sure we don't have to enter this information twice, because it does get kind of, uh, time-consuming to do this twice. Uh, so, and also with the court only having one, uh, Commissioners' Court in the month of December, uh, we're trying to say, can we, uh, make this one month and part of maybe one or two weeks in just, in, in, in January, to allow us to make sure we get our bills paid, to do this as we would normally do as an exception-type expenses, and then have, bring it back for court for verification, for valid, to verify it. That's all, that's all we're asking for.
Like a special motions check run, or something, exceptions that I always sign on to, or would.
We've been working with the departments, trying to eliminate as much as we can, but there's still going to be some stuff where we have to have some stuff going through, and we want to get the Commissioners' Court approval to, 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 to change the policy for this one month, and maybe a little bit.
Because we only have one.
For only one court, yes.
Quite possibly won't be having a meeting until January the tenth.
Correct.
In January is one of the dates, so, yes, I would make that motion.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is, um, to approve, um, the one-time approval for payments not currently on the. Exceptions list, so that we can pay bills.
So that basically all, all type of payments.
In December before the next meeting, it's just.
We are limiting those, yes.
Well, I would say December, from December thirteenth to January tenth to our next meeting, just so we cover everything
Yes.
that we can get done. We still have bills we're going to have to pay, so, yeah.
That's correct.
Yes, I'd make that the motion, are you okay with that, Commissioner Gonzalez, he seconded, so, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number two, approve listing of election workers to be included in the exceptions pay list.
Well, hold.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, yes, ma'am.
So we have an issue, they still haven't been paid, and we go over every single time, it's like pulling teeth, we get there, and we even.
Why have they not been paid?
We're working on the information.
We even do the calculations for them, and I'm going to, because this is on record.
My staff is working on conversion software.
Wait, wait, you said they haven't been paid, let's give them an opportunity to answer, okay, yes.
We have to convert your hours to a rate, because nowadays, because the way we're going to workday, workday requires all Election Day employees to be paid through accounts payable.
Are we in workday doing that right now?
We have to.
We're in workday already doing that?
We're still in, we're still in our current system, but we have to convert it over to workday, which is now.
No, you don't, you should have paid them before, no, they don't.
Okay. That being said.
And we have gone through this before, Judge.
Okay, you're saying we have, can we get this done, and the exceptions list moving forward, because we have.
We should have everything ready by the thirteenth, everything should be ready.
For them, when was the election, when did they work?
The seventh.
November seventh, that's, that's over.
That's not right.
Over a month and a half.
You need to get your information from y'all for, for two weeks later, so don't give me that quick.
We have.
Don't give me, stop with saying that.
Stop. We have everything to them on the fourteenth, November fourteenth.
That's not true.
Please stop.
Okay.
Please, you need to let me finish, because again. Okay. And Judge, I respectfully ask that you listen to the problem and not cut me off, because I'm getting calls from everybody.
I'm in charge here, Kara, and I can listen to you, but you're not listening either. So yes, state your case.
Thank you.
If you're not getting paid, I want to help you.
I understand that, thank you, I appreciate that, they're not being paid, and his excuses, 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 until the thirteenth, it doesn't help. We do the calculations in my office for payroll, to help them, because we say, what do we need to do to help y'all to be able to get these people paid? Y'all know, we come every single time, it's not right, there's no reason for them not to be paid, it's just the extra work that they don't want to do, I, we work with them, and we know this to be true. I'm tired of the excuses, just get it done, please.
Okay, I would like for you to provide me when you turned it in.
We will send it to you.
Yes, please do.
It was on the fourteenth, now, son.
Send it to me.
Everyone that could be paid, that provided all of their information, was given to you, on the fourteenth. We, we sent it earlier, y'all wanted us to create a new document, which we did, everything was provided on the fourteenth. All of these people should be paid, they have everything. We do not send up the information of people, like, if they don't, you know, if someone doesn't put in their social.
So not everybody's ready to be paid.
Right, but that's on them, because the workers haven't provided all the information, right? So we contact them, and that is on them, until they can come up and give us their social, or information.
How many people are we talking about?
That they haven't, I couldn't even tell you, off the top of my head.
Lisa, yes, ma'am.
I mean, not that many, but they don't have that information.
There, there are two people that we have not received social securities or signatures from that were Election Day-only employees, that have not, that have not been processed for payment. They are currently in a check run, if the agenda item is approved, that they're allowed for an exceptions item run, it can be processed quicker than it would ne, than it would if it's not an exceptions items run. All of the early voting people have been paid.
It's not what we're talking about, I understand that, but it's the Election Day people, and there's more of them, that they just, it's one check. They kept one check for them.
We're going to take care of that, because we're going to vote to put them on the exceptions list.
Can you add on there to get them paid this week? And to run the check, this is the exceptions, because we have four elections coming up that we need to prepare for, that's why I put it on the exception.
People that will need to be working, yes.
Okay, so if they worked early voting, they've already been paid.
It's Election Day, it's the Election Day workers.
One at a time.
It's the Election Day workers.
If they worked early voting and worked the election, they've already been paid.
I understand that.
If they just worked that single day of the election, it is in a check run, pending payment, approved by Commissioners' Court.
Okay, now, I have a problem, I have the.
That's because that's when the, as a regular item.
Just a second, ladies. I have a problem with if they worked Election Day, November the seventh, and we still haven't paid them. So yes, they should absolutely be put on the exception list. You bring, send me the November fourteenth where you turned it in.
Okay.
And I am acting in your power to make sure people that have worked for, now it's a good time after, it's almost the end of the month. If we have people working Election Day, we have another election coming up, they need to know they're going to get paid. So let's do everything in our power to move this forward, working together and not point fingers, okay? And we will vote, I'll make the motion right now to put the election workers on the exceptions pay list.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
You found there to get the other ones paid. They're separate, getting them paid immediately is not the exceptions.
I can work on that when we see if we got the fourteenth, you show us, she's saying some people have already been paid, show me who we haven't.
Again, that has nothing to do with them being paid, and the fact I have to prove what I've done, because you, we're not children here, he needs to do his job, but I will gladly provide that to you.
He's saying yes, so I'm saying.
But it doesn't matter, they have it.
Kara, I said, send me the information, and we'll work on it.
When I get time, I will.
They're on the exceptions list.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and everything we can do to get that out as soon as possible, thank you. They're on the exceptions now, so send it. Um, item number three, approve the monthly expense report, P-card and unreconciled P-card transactions through September.
Yes, Your Honor, we try to brought you, then it bounces forward to September, so we just kind of give you a rough idea of where we are for September year-end. Uh, this is just your, your expenses report, uh, if you go to page, uh, twenty-five, you'll show you how much is remaining of the budget for the fiscal year-end, as we know, there's still some pending transactions we have to do, because we have to do some accruals for year-end balances, as well as some, some costs that we have to work with the county attorney on, uh, uh, submitted liabilities that might increase this, but as we see for the remaining portion of the budget on number twenty-five, there was five-point-three percent of the budget remaining, that's a lot higher than we, we, we expect to be spent, we, we expect to only be spending around ninety percent, nor, we, we spent ninety-four percent, so. So this is where some of our, our estimates that we gave you for budget information, this may show you where, when we get to the year-end balances, we may show you where our fund balance is at a loss.
Okay.
The rest of the departments are, are, are in balances, now, they're unreconciled accounts, there are some areas, there's some errors, and we're working with the departments on the errors, but we just had to report what we show in our system, and we're working with these departments to get these errors corrected, and these reconciliations done, because as we know, we're going to workday, and it's very important that we get these transactions completed and done, and we are working with the departments as quickly as we can to get it done. And that's why we're submitting the report to you for September third, uh, twenty-eighth, uh, thirtieth, for, for expense report and unreconciled accounts.
And did we, did we get with Michael Robinson on the unreconciled P-card?
They are working on it with, as well.
And I think last time that we had, um, most of these were on purchasing back there and waiting on receipts, it wasn't like individuals that hadn't done it, or offices or anything like that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion to approve.
Check, or, I'll move if you're.
I'll, I'll second that motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 For the record, I have some information for you about our emails, and I'll give you a copy.
Okay.
Uh, asking, there's double billing on, on there for ours, and we had asked, we had sent an email back on September nineteenth about it, and didn't receive anything back, so I have the emails here for you, but we would ask that they clean up ours for elections.
And the information is on there, I know everybody's busy, I know you are doing workday and everything, so let's all try to be a little bit cognizant of that and patient, but yes, they need to be cleaned off of there if they're duplicates. We've had something in our office as well, but I think they cleared it up right away, so.
Or has not, so we're waiting.
Let's just get rid of P-cards, and we don't have these problems.
Exactly, I, I vote for that right now. Um, on item number four, authorize payment of bills, special motions list, American Rescue Plan Act by the ICE engineers.
Yes, Your Honor, we, uh, we, uh, we got the request from the department, the submitted request, which was Edward, uh, agreeing the payments. Uh, we also got a letter from, from Anna Grant saying that, uh, this ICE that we have, the company are, are not providing the, the unnecessary documents, and that's one consideration, we need to make sure, and the earlier items we, we approved today for ICE, that if they can't provide the information, is this something we need to, to decide what can be done for ICE to meet the requirements? So I'll let Edward and Anna to discuss this, they have submitted this to us, we have the checks ready to go if the court decides approved.
Man, this is exactly why I brought up that other, I had a meeting with Anna and Lulu in my office as well on the percentage of completion or the time and material position, you can't have it both ways, and if you do. But the thing that we didn't do in there, in the job descriptions, and maybe this is more for purchasing to include and work authorizations, is we need milestones with percentage of completion, because there's no way to really tell is this percentage of the job or what.
And then get the requirements that we have under the, the Department of Treasury, the, the federal requirements of meeting these requirements of the information we have.
And there is one invoice on there, there is, when they brought the documentation to my office too, I'll tell J.J. or Edward, if he's doing his, there's one that shows sixty percent completion, I believe, on one item, but the other, supporting document on the other page shows one-point-seven percent, or I don't know, and one showed a hundred percent completion on, on structural or engineering or something, and it showed only one percent, I'm not sure if it was a typo or something, it should have been a hundred percent or something, but those two numbers, those two pages need to match with the invoice that shows the sixty percent on, but I think we need to, um, clarify and get those paid. If we're, if we're going to do percentage of completion, there's no way you can do time and, you know, hourly rates at the same. You can say, maybe it took ten people to do this job.
One or the other.
Yeah, it's, it's one or the other, you can't do both, yeah.
So Judge, this is a percentage-based, the work authorization, and they met the milestones, uh, we had a meeting, and we looked at the storybook, walkway. So they were at the, at that point in time, which was a few weeks ago, at the sixty, what I consider sixty percent, uh, effort, they probably closer to a hundred percent now, so. at the sixty, what I consider sixty percent effort. They probably closer to a hundred percent now, so that's why we, we approve, recommend approval.
Recommend approval, yes. Did you go out there and look at that, Commissioner Matas? Did you? Yes. So, I'll make the motion to pay then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item number five, discuss and consider approving the federal equitable sharing agreement and certification of Constable Precinct Three, Constable Precinct Five, District Attorney and Sheriff's Office.
Yes, Your Honor, every year, we're required by federal agreements that if we, to maintain our agreement with, for equitable sharing with the federal government, that we must, must submit a request as, as well as a form that's signed by the Department of Quest as well as yourself. We, we review the agreements we have. We review the amounts, and these amounts are good. And as we're saying right now, the only ones that are dealing with this is Constable Precinct Three, Precincts Five, the District Attorney and the Sheriff. And they have submitted the forms ready for approval.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider authorizing approving a sole-source purchase with Superior LLC Central Square Company for one solution and maintenance renewals.
Yes, Your Honor, this, as we did earlier for, for executive time, we're required to do this as well for, for one solution, Central Square, a balance of four renewal, even though we will not be maintaining this for the, the full year of this amount we require. We've, we've forwarded this to, to the county attorney's office. They have reviewed the, the information in question. The, this would be the amount of time we needed to get Workday completely working and then suspending the contract as, as, probably within six months.
And this coming out of your budget, so.
That's correct.
It's like I make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number E-one, information technology, discuss and consider authorizing and approving a cooperative agreement with inside public sector, and I understand this is for phone services, and if this doesn't pass, we will not have phone services.
Uh, yes.
And this comes out of your budget. It's, it's budgeted into your department.
Yes, it's already budgeted.
Make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Judge, before you, you're going to executive session. I just had a question about one of the executive session items. That's okay? Jenny, I noted that the discuss and consider appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline of the IT department is back on the agenda. Obviously, the personnel matter, he has a right to have that done in the back room, but if we do, what, what, what right do we have to be able to discuss all the stuff that went on and, because it was a very public issue? And how, how, where's the line there and the distinction and what's posted and what's not? You know, I'm just trying to figure out. I thought this was resolved. It's not. Then we need to, if we're going to hash it back out, let's hash it back out and let the public know exactly what went on, but I don't know what, you know, because it says in open session. So, I, I'm a little confused on what we can and can't talk about today and how.
This is written to provide you the flexibility, and I have not conferred with, yet to find out if he's going to exercise, you know, a desire to have the discussion in open or in private, and I can do that in just a moment, but there's, it's written so that you can have your discussion in private, in, in executive, but if you do decide that there's some action, we just put this discuss and consider and take action in that item so you don't need a duplicate item elsewhere. So, this is just providing you flexibility if.
So.
But we don't have to say in open session. If we have an action item on there, we don't have anything else.
Okay, um, okay, because I, I mean, I, I'm all for doing this in open session because I think the public deserves to know exactly what went on, but since if he wants to just do it in the back, that's fine, but I'm all for doing it in the open, so whatever. I just didn't want to, didn't want her to start reciting off the, all the sections before all that was determined and, and, uh, whatever.
Would the court allow me to confer with Daryl real quick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I can, I can respond to this concern about it. Commissioner, for the, for the full discussion with Commissioners Court, there's going to be a lot of discussion on cybersecurity, and that's not something that I would discuss in open session. That's kind of a vulnerability. But it also, we can separate in executive session what happened and come back out, and I can make, I have no problem commenting on the facts of what happened with the loss of the domain expiration, but, but there's a lot more information to be provided to Commissioners.
That's not posted, though. There's nothing posted about any kind of cybersecurity discussion. This is all about, this one is all just posted as discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of the IT director pursuant to section five-five-one. So, I don't, there's no site, we didn't, I didn't know we were having a discussion on cybersecurity. The, the whole incident that was related to what we discussed last time was purely regarding the, the domain and how that was, in my opinion, pretty catastrophic. So, I, why are we, we didn't post anything about cybersecurity?
I believe that it's possible that during the discussion of what happened in the performance, I think Mr. Earwood is describing that his explanation to the court will involve issues with cybersecurity. Is that?
Okay.
Yes.
If you think, if you vetted it and you think it meets the posting requirement, I'll leave that to you. You're, you're the, you're the attorney.
You're it.
Okay, are we ready then?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, it, um, we're going into executive session. Public notice is given that Commissioners Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meeting Act, chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there's been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda item in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer in accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, five-five-one dot zero-seven-three, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four-five, five-five-one dot zero-seven-six, five-five-one dot zero-eight-six, five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven. The Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Item number one, A, consult with the county attorney regarding offer of settlement from Abraham de la Garza's attorney, Robert Hale, regarding de la Garza's employment claim and related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, and discuss and take action on the same. Item B, consult with the county attorney regarding the possibility of any counteroffer from the county, possibly, uh, the possibility of authorizing the county attorney to deliver a counteroffer from the county, Robert Hale, and related matters. Discuss and take action on the same. Item C, discuss and consider the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of the Information Technology Department head pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four of Texas Government Code. Discuss, consider, and take action in the same. And, um, item D, consult with the county attorney on Oasis County Commissioners Court Board appointments and all related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, and take action on same. Item E, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to continued county involvement in the Corpus Christi and Oasis County Health District. Discuss and consider taking action on the same in open court. And item three, A nine, discuss and consider health care services at the Oasis County Jail, the options available to the court through execution of the extended month-to-month period, amendment to the current armor correctional health service agreement, Oasis County Correctional Facilities, or executing an order granting an exception to competitive requirements pursuant to local government code two-six-two dot zero-two-four for the purpose of jail health care services, which may become necessary to preserve or protect the public health or safety of the residents in the county incarcerated in the Oasis County jail and all related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one. And it is eleven forty-six, and we are going into executive session. Thank you. It's one thirty-six. We are back from executive. Moving to executive item A, Commissioner Matas, I believe you have a motion for me.
Yes, Judge. I make a motion to reject the offer from Abraham de la Garza's attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item E, Commissioner Gonzalez, I believe you have a motion for that.
Judge, after discussion, I'd like to, we have a. Well, we have participated in partnership with the city of Corpus Christi. I move, I'd like to make a motion that the county change directions and withdraw from the city county health district in order to focus on our rural public health services outside the city limits, which we are committed to serve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in.
Just a quick discussion.
Clarification, yes.
Just discussion. I just want to say, I think this is, we, we've really enjoyed and appreciated the partnership with the city. This has nothing to do with anything other than the county just wants to focus more on the areas that we're legally obligated to do, which are those areas in the, outside the city limits and inside the Oasis County. We did provide, I think the county attorney sent to the city attorney and judge contacted via text recently the, the mayor to let her know of what we were going, doing. I think there's a hundred and twenty-day provision that this would trigger, so there's not going to be any lapse in services, anything of that nature, because we've got that. I know Commissioner Gonzalez and others have been working on some different ideas to really focus some attention on the, the rural areas to, to meet the needs there. So, there's no negative to this. We, we think we can also save some, some, you know, money on our end, which will maybe offset some of that money we spent today, Johnny, so you can't ask me for any more next year. I was just joking with Commissioner Gonzalez about that, but we'll see how that, how that plays out. But again, there's, there's no negative here. We, we, the city, the partnership's been great. I think this, it's worked super well. Nobody has any real objection, anything. It's just we want to focus on the, the rural areas that we represent, and that's really what we're giving, you know, our advice from counsel. That's what we're legally obligated to do, and we, we appreciate everything that the city's done, and it's been a great partnership, and we look forward to continuing to work with them on this and other, other issues.
Your Honor, before you vote on that, we make sure that when we know, when the, when this withdrawal is finalized, still with the, the, when we know the payments need to stop.
Yes, we will make sure.
Yeah, it could be, you know, a hundred and twenty days.
We have, we have fun there. We're getting back from the.
We'll work it out. I mean, this is a, this is a peaceful, easy thing, and we look forward to working with the city on this.
Move transition. Yes, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Going back to three, A nine, I have a motion. I move to execute an order granting an exception to competitive requirements pursuant to local government code two-six-two dot zero-two-four for the purchase of jail health care services on a month-to-month basis, which will be necessary to preserve or protect the public health or safety of the residents of the county incarcerated in the Oasis County jail and all related matters.
Can you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry. That was a lot, big mouthful. I'll, yeah.
Uh, move to execute an order granting an exception to competitive requirements pursuant to local government code two-six-two dot zero-two-four for the purchase of health care services on a month-to-month basis, which will be necessary to preserve or protect the public health or safety of the residents of the county incarcerated in the Oasis County jail and all related matters, and this is to include that it will not exclude whoever takes this on month-to-month would still be permitted to bid on the services there.
And I think also we wanted to make sure, include in the motion, Judge, that the current employees would stay where they are with whoever comes in and takes this over temporarily.
Yes, it is our desire for them to continue, yes.
Right, so.
They're doing a good job.
Yeah, and I'll second that, and then just discussion. I, Commissioner Gonzalez is right that the employees have done a wonderful job, and they've been with several different companies that have been in the jail. They've been the consistency in all this. They've been the ones that have kept us going through all the changes that we've had throughout the years over with different companies. So, we definitely appreciate them, and I think what we had talked about doing, I think, Judge, and I don't know if that was, that's why I was asking to reread it.
We didn't have that in there where you would authorize me to sign the contract and then bring it back to court for ratification.
Right, so I don't know if that needs to be part of that.
Part of the motion, or I already have that.
You have the exception. You do it, you bring it back for ratification.
Said based on the fact that the contract is expiring, that we wanted to make sure and include also in the motion that the judge, county attorney, and sheriff would work together to find someone immediately to take over that role.
They're already here, on their way over there right now, so we're good.
To take over that role, but just to put it as, as a matter of public record and part of the motion and the intent of the court.
Was that coming to us?
Well, just a month-to-month, just to go find someone.
This one would be coming automatic, and then I'd bring it for ratification, yes. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other clarification or discussion?
Did you get all that? I know we added a lot to that motion, so I want to make sure you got all of it. I'm sorry. We added a bunch to it. Okay.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Um, are there any adjournments in memory?
Oh, I had one.
I know you said that again.
Oh, yeah.
Can y'all just say, or I heard that you're not taking any action on the others? Uh, for executive?
No.
Because there is discuss and consider. Did y'all go through?
There were, there is no action on any of the other items in executive.
It says take action on same in open session. It does. Take action on same.
That was withdrawn.
Were they all?
C was withdrawn.
Okay. D, nothing? Just no action?
No, that was just consult.
And take action on the same. Just, I can just, for the record, no action taken?
On B?
On B, C, D, and there is no action taken.
And then, Jenny, I think we did talk about not having this A and B like this. It was.
Right.
Because that's what makes it, we took action on A, and there is no action on B, because we don't really need to have them both on there twice. So, if you change that going forward where it's just one item.
Yes.
Please. Thank you.
And are there any adjournments in memory?
Yeah, but I don't remember.
If there are none, then I will accept a motion to adjourn. He's going over there. We have a motion and a second. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it is one forty-four, and we are adjourned.